I call the March 19th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment, Successor Agency and Financing Authority to order. We begin tonight as we do each week with a pledge of allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Ms. Rochelle Redmond.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding three parcels, 427 C Street, 317 Fifth Street, and 317 Third Street, and a portion of a parcel number that's listed in our agenda, to confer with our legal counsel regarding existing litigation with the United Christian Centers. No action was taken on either of those items. Also, for the purpose of conferring with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the West Sacramento Police Officers Association, stationary engineers local 39, and our department heads, management specialists, and professional and confidential units, no action was taken. All right, with that, we're going to proceed to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the state law prevents us from taking action or even having a discussion on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum on items that are in our jurisdiction. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item tonight to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer, and we use that timer to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard, and so to that end, we ask that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that chart simply shows which item we're currently considering. We know that for some folks, speaking in public and on television and webcast on the Internet can create some anxiety, so we do ask, just in the interest of respect for your fellow citizens, that we maintain a civil discourse and that there not be any boos or cat calls or even applause or other demonstrations during the testimony. We take the yellow cards on agenda items all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on those items. Once the council questions or the discussion or even the public testimony has begun, we don't take any additional cards, and so if you have an intention to speak on any of the agenda items tonight, be sure to get the card into the city clerk before the conclusion of the staff report on that item. So with that, we have a few requests to speak under item 1A, and the first is by Christine Amy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Christine Amy. I live at 600 William Street, West Sacramento. I'm here representing the historic Broderick District Neighborhood Watch Program that was formed a little over 18 months ago due to the concerns we had over crime and safety and health issues in our area. I'm here tonight out of great pleasure, and I wanted to mention publicly that we were so happy with what's going on with the new police chief, McDonald, and the things that we're seeing. We all have access to the website Crime Mapping, and when we see the activity that's going on, it's just very encouraging and reassuring, and we're thrilled with what we're seeing on the streets and commend the work that's being done. I wanted to thank him publicly.
Thank you very much. Great job, Chief. Rochelle Redmond. Welcome back.
Long time no see.
It's been a while.
Well, this is about Rayleigh Field on Sunday, the 16th, when they had this Shamrock. I don't know if you got any complaints about the amplifying system. I'm a Rivercat fan, but I'm not a fan of what happened Sunday morning. This will be Rivercat's 15th year, and I never heard the amplifier system so loud. I live two miles away and was waken up by shouts of "one, two, three, four, five." It woke me up at 7:30 a.m. Sunday, and also he was shouting at the crowd. It happened 7:30 Sunday morning. I thought people were fighting outside my house. I had all windows and doors closed, and I could hear the announcer shouting at the crowd and counting down repeatedly, repeatedly. It was the Shamrock and Half Marathon. There needs to be a cap on amplified sound coming from Rayleigh Field, especially on Sunday mornings between 7:00 and 8:00 a.m. I would ask that the city contact Rayleigh Field to make sure they are complying with city ordinances on amplified sound. In 15 years, I've never heard anything so loud coming from Rayleigh Field. I'm sure it woke up the whole north side of the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Willie Mull, West Sacramento, for the record. I guess you've heard about the relocation of our L Street bus stops between Fifth and Seventh over to Capitol Mall, to one bus stop there so far. And I noticed that the bus going in on Tower Bridge Gateway, before you get to Fifth Street, we still have a red and white sign that says "Bus Stop Discontinued." That was supposed to be for Sunday. Somebody should have removed that stop sign by now. And yes, I do, I still think we should replace that Broadway 15th Street Bridge with the Southport-South Sacramento Bridge. And I was pleasantly surprised when I was at the Burger King place at Arden Fair this afternoon. They have a big new Coke machine, and that now includes caffeine-free Diet Coke. So if Burger King can do it, I think McDonald's is big enough to do it, too, and especially where they got four regular Cokes and four Diet Cokes that still have the caffeine over there at West Acre and West Capitol. Finally, I wrote another one of my little songs. I don't know how many remember this song from a little over 60 years ago called "Heart of My Heart." So the first verse and chorus goes like, "I had a dream, folks, you have yours, too. I wanted wheelchair ramp, it just came true. Come check my ramp out, it sure beats stairs. Universal design affords that needed care." And the chorus goes, "Better access, not excess is quite fair. As we live longer, more can't handle the stairs for half of living units, whether new or rebuilt from old. Universal design gives better access when sold." Anyway, you get the idea.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. I think that the song is within our jurisdiction, the choice of McDonald's to sell a certain mix of diet drinks, probably not, but thank you. All right, Jeff Lyon.
At the last council meeting, we explained how the city of Placerville made a huge mistake by welcoming and coddling the homeless into their city, just as Mayor Cabaldin does here in West Sacramento. Of course, crime increased in Placerville, and their homeless problems grew out of control, just like here in West Sacramento. Then Placerville successfully solved their homeless problems by adopting the same model as presented by us in our Washington Neighborhood Homeless Action Plan. Placerville afforded help to the homeless that wanted help and enforced the law by removing all of the illegal homeless camps in their city. Now, here is another Sacramento Bee article dated March 8th entitled, "Known for its generosity, Auburn Sees More Homeless." It explains how the city of Auburn welcomed the homeless, just like Placerville used to do, and how our mayor currently does here in West Sacramento. Of course, in both Auburn and West Sacramento, many more homeless criminals were attracted by this welcoming attitude resulting in more crime. And this article contains the following quote from an Auburn official, quote, "There is no easy answer to this," which is exactly the same tired quote our mayor continues to say here in West Sacramento. Mayor Cabaldin is befuddled by this issue, so he makes no decisions and takes no action. So what are you going to do, Mayor? Continue to be befuddled and do nothing like the city of Auburn? Or will you do the right thing for the citizens of West Sacramento and adopt the actions in our homeless action plan like the city of Placerville did successfully, and they resolve the issue once and for all? We're all ears tonight. Tell us for the record. Please continue to visit our website, www.cleanupwesac.com.
All right, thank you. Those are all the requests we have to speak under item 1A, and just to the city manager on the noise issue on the Shamrock and Half Marathon, Rayleigh Field doesn't operate that event itself, and it's subject, noise levels are subject to a variety of agreements as well as our nuisance ordinances as well, so follow up maybe with the event organizers and with our special permit folks as opposed to the Rivercats themselves, because they're not directly responsible for that event. All right, so then we'll proceed to item 1B. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. On this past Monday, it was a board meeting, the Yellow Natural Heritage Program, JPE Board. We just received a budget update. Our budget continues to look good, and so we're proceeding on that, and we also agreed on one item to proceed with the second draft of the plan and have a meeting time set with the state and our federal partners in the first week of April to proceed forward. So things are continuing to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, I've got a couple, if I may. The West SacSAC committee on February 13th, and we entered into, or we directed the board to put an MOU together, Memorandum of Understanding, with the Department of Army, and one of the big reasons we do that is because we'd like to have reimbursement. We had spent some monies earlier, and we did not have an MOU in place, and Congress changed the rules so that you had to have that in place, and we lost out. But I've asked our board to see if there's a way that we can work with Senators Feinstein and Boxer and also with Doris Matsui, so that communities like ours that missed the first word just by, oh, just a few days before the court changed the rules, that we do get reimbursed for some of the engineering, some of the design, some of the planning, for some of the projects that we've already completed. Project over there along the river and also the project along the bypass. And so we would like to see if we can get those dollars because they are substantial. So we did that, and SAC Regional did meet on the 12th, and SAC Regional Sanitation District, which we are a member of, we supported a resolution to move forward with a rate increase that is necessary for a $2 billion to $3 billion expansion of the existing plant. That's the plant in Sacramento, and that's going to cost us, and it's going to cost us about $3 a month, and the resolution says that will take effect July 1st of 2014. So I just want to inform the community that there will be an expense on our sewer water bill of an additional $3. But it is necessary, and it's something that we have to do to follow state law. State law has made this mandatory, so it's something that we're really trying to find ways to reduce the costs, but so far, we've been successful in some areas, and we will continue to look for that, but there still is going to be a $3 hit that we will see on our bills, tax bills. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kristof. Two reports. Tomorrow, the Board of Directors of SACOG is going to be meeting, and one item I wanted to flag is that the board's going to be approving $1.6 million in funds, additional funds for the streetcar project on behalf of the Regional Transit District. So this is in addition to the money that was allocated by us and by SACOG in the fall and that the city of Sacramento is also working on as well. So the pieces are coming, continue to come together on that project in the way that they need to. And then I think I'm required to report this. So I was in DC on Thursday and Friday at the invitation of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation for a National Mayor Summit on mayors and schools. There was no action item, and I didn't have the opportunity to spend an hour with Mr. Gates talking about a little bit of polio but mostly school issues on behalf of the small cities of the country. So it was a big honor, and it was interesting, but I didn't have a specific action, and I didn't walk away with a check for the work that we're doing here in the community, but it was great. All right, so item 1C is appointments for boards and commissioners. We have no appointments this evening. Just a reminder that for anyone who's contemplating an application for the vacancy on the city council created by the elevation, well, not the elevation, the sideways movement of Mr. Vegas to the County Board of Supervisors by the governor, that the deadline for that application is tomorrow. It's the 20th. Did I close the business tomorrow? Close the business tomorrow with the, and by the council's prior order, that interviews for the finalists would be conducted at the council's regular meeting on April 2nd. All right, if there's not an objection, I'm going to actually pull an item off the consent calendar, move it forward since I made an erroneous commitment that we would get to this item 20 minutes ago. And that's item, we'll try to dispose of it quickly, which is item 7. Then we'll return to the presentations and the remainder of the consent agenda. Item 7 is the update on the US-50 WX Construction Project in Sacramento River Viaduct West End Viaduct Construction Projects. So wanted to pull that off of consent, not for purposes of presentation. We took this item up with an extensive presentation and discussion by Caltrans at our last meeting. That was followed up by a large session with employers and businesses in the community as well, and then by more formal, formal and informal discussions initiated by our staff with Caltrans around the mitigation measures that will be absolutely essential. These aren't really measures to dramatically reduce the impact of the closure of the WX Freeway and the various freeway interchange ramps and everything else that we heard about last time. It is going to be an absolute nightmare. There's no two ways about that. It could be much worse, but it will feel during that period to virtually everyone in our community, residents, schoolchildren, workers, business owners, that it couldn't possibly have been any worse than it is because of the very special circumstances that we have in our city because of there's only a certain number of river crossings, and so there's only so many contingencies and alternatives that residents can use. And similarly, there's only Jefferson and Harbor and to some extent Enterprise and now Riverfront as Fifth Street as north-south alternatives, and so, again, there's only so many alternatives that anyone can make. It's unlike the WX itself, where you have the other 24 letters of the alphabet to proceed east-west and a whole grid of streets to go north-south, so there's an almost unlimited number of alternatives. We don't have that here, and so the potential consequences for all kinds of movements, commutes for sure, kids going to school, but also importantly, from our specific perspective here around the movement of emergency vehicles, police, fire, ambulances, and others, those are really critical that we resolve. So I was going to ask the city manager to give a quick update on the status of the proposed mitigations and where we stand, and they get council feedback.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, council, we have communicated with Caltrans twice now on the project. We've asked them to delay the project till after school starts or close to the end of school in June. They've cited several reasons where they want to maintain the current schedule to start in May. Our public works staff, fire, and police have met, and we've come up with a pretty comprehensive list of items that we would need to mitigate the cut-through traffic that you highlighted. We've sent a letter to Caltrans outlining that, and we expect to hear from them soon. We're going to, our staff is going to meet with the project manager for the WX project on Friday, and we're hopeful that our efforts to mitigate this traffic will be reimbursed because we simply don't have the funds to do it on our own. But it's been a great effort from all the departments to at least make the best of this. We've also encouraged Caltrans to suspend work on the I-80 HOV lane project, so Bay Area traffic would not come on US-50 headed to Tahoe or headed to Folsom or Eldorado Hills. They could use I-80 and then cut over on Watt or Hazel or go all the way up to the Y at Tahoe. They are, rather than suspend the project, they are going to maintain the current number of lanes, so there won't be a reduction of traffic. They recognize that that will be a key alternative, and I think they're sensitive to that. So we're continuing to talk to Caltrans, but the key issue for us right now is getting our specified mitigations reimbursed.
And the estimate that we've provided Caltrans is on the order of $600,000. So it's not a trivial impact on our core services here, and that's partly for outreach to assure that everyone has the opportunity to plan and make adjustments and telecommute or just not work, take two months, six weeks of vacation, whatever solutions that folks can come up with. That's part of it, but most of it is for reoperations of the signals and officers redirecting traffic and dealing with all of the other contingencies that are going to be involved. It's the very direct real impacts, not simply the outreach alone, although that is very important, because I think, as we heard, as we explained to Caltrans last time, it's not just the effect of folks here who need to use the WX. And that's not trivial, but it is all the butterfly effects from that facility as folks who are going from the Bay Area towards Elk Grove, for example, who would otherwise, we would never see in our city, but can't get there through the normal freeway, cut them exiting at Harbor or Enterprise and going through Southport and onto Jefferson to get, to cut over at Freeport, which will be a very viable alternative, given the more than 60-minute traffic delays that they estimated on this stretch of the freeway, that those sorts of impacts are also there, and so it will affect every square inch likely of the city's traffic circulation system. And it's an important project, and we've, as I think we were clear with Caltrans before, the city's very supportive of making sure that the freeway is in a state of good repair, but we need to make sure that we have the appropriate resources to assure, to minimize what's going to be an extraordinarily severe impact and also to make sure that we're able, fully able to protect the public's health and safety.
Absolutely.
Any other comments on this? Mr. Kristof.
I guess just the only comments that I would make, and that is, is I'm glad to see that we're asking for reimbursement. I think that that is a critical issue. We haven't budgeted for this. We didn't know that this was coming down the pike a year ago, two years ago, when we started our budget process, so we really didn't know. Now you've got half a billion, a half a million dollars or $600,000, and so that would be a major hit. And the other thing is, is I'm glad you asked about the schools because it's one of the questions that I've heard the most from people at the grocery store, the post office, whatever it may be, that, "Well, wait a minute. How am I going to get my kids to school?" Because they go to school in Sacramento, whether they go to parochial school or they go to some other kind of school. And so it was, I was glad to see that you asked about that, and we will at least be able to report about that. As far, it may not be what they want to hear, but at the same time, it will be something that at least our community, folks out there and in TV land, you know that we're trying, but as the mayor has indicated, we only have three, really, really three roads that go north-south in our city, and it is going to be very, very difficult to work with not only our citizens but all of the people that are coming off the freeway to find a faster or to find a different way to get around that system, and it's going to be tough. It's going to be really hard, and I think that the council is doing the best job that we can as far as trying to prepare our community for what's going to happen, and so it'll be just something that, you know, we can deal with. I mean, we realize that we have to have it done because the repair of the freeway system is absolutely critical, not for just this year but for many, many, many years to come. And so, but at the same time, there'll be quite an inconvenience, and we just need to be aware of that.
Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. Just two things. First of all, I needed to, it is related. I had to report that I did attend the Yellow County Transportation District meeting a week ago, Monday, in Woodland, and this was on the agenda. The executive director presented to the rest of the board members from Davis, Woodland, and other areas in Yellow County, an update on the Fix 50, and to some extent, a lot of the other jurisdictions were unaware of kind of the extent of what was planned, and so the Transportation District was well-informed, and they are also working with our staff, I know, and kind of coming up with contingency plans and also coming up with their own list of items to help offset or mitigate some of the impact. So I would thank you for continuing the conversations. I'd urge you and the team to continue reaching out and working with Transit District as well as across the river. I know they are planning on it and working with our staff already, but I think there's probably some opportunities for some synergies and working together, help mitigate traffic going both ways, because we do, obviously, they come to our side of town to go to Rayleigh Field, they come to our side of town to go to work at UPS or wherever in our city, and they'll be affected also by the trucks being like out of UPS trying to make it to their home and whatever else. And so, again, it's just the opportunities we can find to partner and work with them would be critical, but thank you for the update. I'm glad you're working and asking Caltrans for the things we're asking for, because we're going to need them.
Mayor President Johansson.
Yeah, Marty, I think one other issue, too, is because of the nature of the location of the hospitals here, either downtown or in Davis, it would probably be an idea to have a more fully articulated plan on what the emergency preparedness would be during these times of peak transit and finding a way to get that out to the public on, you know, that we have a plan on how that's going to happen, you know, sooner rather than later so we can get prepared for that.
Well, our team led by Public Works and Fire and Police, particularly Fire, is concerned about an emergency where we would need to get somebody to a hospital, and in our letter, we've requested the Highway Patrol to make their helicopter available for that purpose, and it's my understanding today that there's a good chance that that would be available.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
That's very important. All right, this is, I mean, $600,000, you know, for folks in our community, that's some of whom deal with a lot more money than that and some of them deal with way less money than that, that's more than we spent an entire year on code enforcement in the city. I mean, it's a significant amount of resources in a community of our size that we just don't have the capacity to absorb that, and it's a small part of the, it's a minuscule part of the overall project, but it is a cost associated with that Caltrans project, and they need to step up. Okay, all right, so we have the item and the recommendation before us from the city manager. Oh, you don't need any.
It's simply an update.
I never know how updates end up, how requests for feedback end up on consent. All right, so that'll dispense with item 7, and thank you. And then we're going to return to presentations. Item 2, which is a presentation of abacimation recognizing March as the month of the young professional. And actually, I'm going to ask the council if we could take And actually, I'm going to ask the council if we could take all three, all three proclamations up simultaneously before I go to the podium and try to read them and run, so I don't have to keep running back and forth. And so, and then item three is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing March 20th, 2014, as Mayor for Meals Day. And item four is presentation of a proclamation honoring Jerry Wingfield for her work on the Parks and Community Services Commission. Is there a motion on item two?
So moved. There you go.
All right, I'll leave that to the city clerk, but I know it's moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries unanimously, is there a motion on item three's presentation for Mayor for Meals Day? Mr. Ledesma?
Also moved.
Seconded by Mayor Potem Johannesen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries, and item four, proclamation honoring Jerry Wingfield, is there a motion to that effect? Mayor Potem Johannesen moved.
Seconded.
Councilmember Ledesma seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none. Present them in a row.
There you go.
I can ask the emerged, the young professional folks to go forward. Verna. You can do it over here. We have this, there was, there was a time before we had cameras that we came over here to do our presentations, but we have cameras now, but it's just a historical artifact. So we want to present a proclamation in a moment, but I think you're right, the proclamation will mean more, more if you tell us what it's all about.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, Mary Cabaldin and members of the city council. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Verna Salpezio and I'm a project manager with Civitas. Additionally, I sit on the leadership council for Metro Edge, the Young Professional Program of the Metro Chamber. I'm also a vice chair of the Urban Land Institute Young Leaders Group. And finally, most importantly, a longtime West Sacramento resident and very proud to call West Sacramento my home. I'd like to thank you, Mary Cabaldin, for spearheading this proclamation declaring March as the month of the young professionals. Nearly a third of the region's population is between the age of 21 and 40. Our demographic is actively engaged and making contributions daily to ensure our region is economically viable for many generations to come. On Friday, March 21st, Metro Edge, along with several other YP organizations in the region, including the Urban Land Institute and the United Way of California Capital Region's Emerging Leaders Program, is hosting the state's first Young Professional Summit. The event is called the Emerged Summit and we expect over 500 of the region's best and brightest to attend in an effort to collaborate and create a region where world-class talent base calls home. I'd like to introduce a few of my YP counterparts who you guys may know well, and if not, you should definitely get to know. They are actively involved in several of the YP organizations in the region and they are working closely on the planning for Friday's Emerged Summit. First of all, Vernon Ed Austin with Domus Development, and I'm sure you guys know, West Sacramento Parks and Community Services Commissioner. Christina Ricci, United Way California Capital Region and United Way Emerging Leaders Member. And then Nicholas Macuso, API Limousine and on the Communications Committee for Metro Edge. Yes, can you guys come up, please? Keep talking, sorry. I'm glad I have him here. Thank you again for inviting us here today to recognize the YPs in the West Sacramento area. I'd also like to formally invite each of you city council members to attend our Young Leaders Connect on Friday, which will be, which will serve as our Emerged Summit after-party. I'll be sure to send you full details in the morning. Again, thank you on behalf of the YPs in the region. We appreciate the city of West Sacramento's support.
So with that, I want to present the proclamation that the city council just adopted and we, we're one of the early cities in the region to adopt the proclamation, but that's just a marker, West Sacramento is a very, is very excited about the work that some of our residents and some of our alumni are doing in the region to really promote young professionals, both for the economic health of the region, because our economy as a region depends on it. Our competitiveness globally depends on this demographic succeeding and creating wealth and opportunity and prosperity in our region, but also so much of our own community's aspirations and our general plan envision community with a diverse economy that, with a deep commitment to the creative economy in particular and to the new urbanist economy. These are areas that are really being invented in some cases and reinvented in many others by young professionals throughout the country, but particularly right here in the Sacramento region and in West Sacramento. So we're very excited to be supportive of the work that's happening and we're thrilled to be partners in the work that, that young professionals in our community and throughout the region are doing. And so the proclamation simply says this, whereas the West Sacramento City Council has the responsibility to recognize occasions of outstanding significance, and whereas the country's most robust economies are driven by metro areas infused with flourishing young professionals, and whereas the attraction and retention of young professionals is essential to the future of the competitiveness of the city of West Sacramento, its businesses and its citizens, and whereas young professionals play a significant role in the economic viability and vitality of the city of West Sacramento, and whereas young professionals have partnered with business and community leaders to promote and create a viable and livable city for young professionals, and whereas young professionals will, how many times am I going to say young professionals? Whereas young professionals will convene the first Young Professionals Summit in the city of Sacramento on March 21st, 2014, and whereas this Young Professionals Summit will provide social, philanthropic, professional, and civic development opportunities, and whereas the accomplishments of young professionals deserve acknowledgement, affirmation, celebration, and repetition by the city of, of West Sacramento. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the city of West Sacramento does hereby declare the month of March 2014 as the month of the young professional. Thank you for all of your work, for the leadership that you're creating in our community and our region, and we're thrilled to be partners with you in that, making that a success. And Vernon, and Vernon, although many of them also appeared on the cover of ConStux Magazine this month, right Vernon? Bringing some, bringing some terrific West Sacramento style to the region, to the region's media market as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have a camera?
Isn't there a camera right there?
Pull it off. We didn't bring our PR team this time around. A personal PR team.
We have one.
Personal PR team.
No, no, not the city does. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, invite Kristi Skipbins to come forward for a presentation. Kristi is the executive director of the Elderly Nutrition Program and Meals on Wheels of Yolo County. For me to present the proclamation of the city council recognizing March 20th, 2014, as Mayor's for Meals Day in West Sacramento. Whereas the Meals on Wheels Association of America is the oldest and largest national organization in the United States representing those programs that provide meals to people in need. The association's mission is to end senior hunger. And whereas the elderly nutrition program in Yolo County, also known as Meals on Wheels, is a private nonprofit community benefit organization that's provided over 80,000 meals to 1,200 seniors in Davis, West Sacramento, Winters, Woodland, Knights Landing, Madison, and Espardo just last year. The organization serves meals and friendship Monday through Friday to frail homebound elders and seniors at senior centers. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs are on the front lines of our hunger battle and need support from elected leaders to continue providing the nutritious meals and human contact that our seniors often so desperately need and depend upon. And whereas March, March for Meals is a national campaign during the month of March initiated by the association, which seeks to raise awareness of senior hunger and to encourage action on the part of the local community. And whereas the elderly nutrition program here in Yolo County announced that it will be holding Mayor's for Meals Day as part of the association's March for Meals campaign. Mayor's council members and county supervisors throughout Yolo County will be participating in the event to show support for our community's hungry seniors by delivering meals to homebound seniors and working in the kitchens and dining rooms of our congregate meal the week of March 17th through March 20th. And whereas local elected officials have been involved with the elderly nutrition program in the past, and the National Mayor's for Meals Day is an excellent way to continue that relationship. EMP is thankful that the local leaders have stepped up to the plate and joined the mission to end senior hunger in Yolo County. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the city of West Sacramento does hereby recognize March 20th, 2014, as Mayor's for Meals Day and acknowledges the elderly nutrition program of Yolo County for implementing this event in West Sacramento to show continued commitment and dedication to ensuring that no senior goes hungry. Thank you, so, thank you so much for all of your work and although the proclamation doesn't call them out by name, I want to particularly acknowledge the leadership of our, of council member Chris Ledesma, who has been a member of the board at the elderly nutrition program and a steadfast supporter, you know, both at the board and on the, on the streets and in the kitchen and at the doorstep. And I've helped him a couple of days or two, but he's out there all the time and other, other officials and community activists and leaders in our community as well. It does take the entire community to step up. It's not a huge commitment, it's not a huge effort, but it makes a huge difference. It's the knock on the door with the meal and it may be the only, it may be the only time of the day that the, that the senior at home gets the opportunity to interact with another human being. And the importance of that, in addition to the importance of just eating, is so critical. And it's so basic and so obvious, but so important that everyone in the community steps up to help. And so the work that, that you do at Elderly Nutrition countywide and particularly here in West Sacramento is so tremendously valued and we thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you. If I can, just to thank Kristi and Deb Glazer, who's been on our, in the board for Elderly Nutrition. She's a West Ac resident. She's been very active. So thank you for your leadership in helping West Sacramento spread the word. And I want, you know, as the mayor said, this is a very important program. It is a private nonprofit organization that provides this service, both the congregate meals, which are held at the old senior center on Cummins, but as well, they deliver meals throughout our city. And there's a variety of volunteers throughout our city who come every day, deliver the meals without, without asking for anything more than just the, the simple pleasure and the honor of delivering a good meal to folks around our city. So I want to thank all of them as well. So thank you, Kristi, for coming out tonight and thank you for all your work in furthering the, the mission of Elderly Nutrition and Meals on Wheels. Yes, and they can use volunteers too.
And if you want to volunteer, what would you do?
So if you do want to volunteer, you can go onto the Elderly Nutrition, they're on Facebook, they're also on the website. You can contact Kristi there and they'll set you up to get on a delivery schedule.
All right, Ms. Jerry, Jerry Wingfield, please come forward. I think I've done this before, but I never tire of, I never tire of it because this is an opportunity that we as a council have to honor, again, a woman who has had such a huge impact in our community in so many ways. And so these proclamation, the proclamation that I'm about to present to her for her service on the Parks and Community Services Commission will be a couple of sentences that will refer to some important things that she has contributed to, but it's, it only scratches the surface of her impact, her work, her inspiration, her call to moral values in our community and to environmental sustainability and to youth and to so many things, to history, to the arts, to literature, to, to everything that it should mean to be a good person in our community and a good West Sacramento Jerry Hughes Wingfield represents. And so it is my honor to present this proclamation of the city council honoring her for her work on the Parks and Community Services Commission. So whereas Jerry Wingfield was first appointed to the Parks and Community Services Commission in 1999, and whereas during Jerry's term on the commission, her involvement led to the approval of the expansion of the Broderick Boat Ramp, field allocation policy, and master plans for Patwin Park. And whereas Jerry provided valuable input on the design and the programming and the amenities of the Joint Use Recreation Center, the Community Center, the Riverwalk Trail and Bridge District Levy Access Road Project, Bright Park Master Plan, Delta Gardens Park and Public Art Designs, the Emile Whitey Boisclaire Park Design, the Garden Park Design, the Jerome D. Berry Park Design, the Barge Canal Access, the Main Drain Parkway, you're tired, and the general plan update. Whereas Jerry strongly believes in the city of West Sacramento's support for the citizens of West Sacramento, and whereas Jerry was a strong advocate for seniors, trees, and the arts and historic preservation in our community, and whereas while Jerry was on the commission, over $290,000 in mini grant funds were donated to deserving community nonprofit groups. And whereas while Jerry was a member of the Parks and Community Services Commission, the Parks and Recreation Department offered the West Sacramento community more recreation leisure programs than at any other time in the history of the city. And whereas Jerry's involvement on the Parks and Community Services Commission demonstrates her belief that involvement is the key to success. So now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of West Sacramento recognizes Jerry Wingfield for her hard work and dedication while serving on the Parks and Community Services Commission and does honor her with this proclamation. Congratulations, Jerry.
It's been a great 20 years. It's been a wonderful experience to have so much, I don't know, but it's a way to make ourselves heard. This city is just, it's a wonderful city. I appreciate it, I love it, and, and I see it's just being well-handled. Thank you.
the top five bicycle cities in the region, but it wasn't always that way. And if you were in town 20 years ago, you know, walking or driving around and you saw a couple on bicycles going around the city, that was almost certainly, well, if it wasn't people from Davis just stopping, going the way through, it was Jerry and Bill setting an example that has become a core part of who we are in the city. So thanks again, Jerry. All right, so we're now going to proceed to the consent agenda, which is five through, items five through nine, with, obviously with the exception of item seven. Are there any other items on consent? Any ones just to remove or any item for separate question or comment? So item six and item eight will take up separately, we'll have separate questions on them. So item six is consideration and approval of approval of a pre-qualified on-call list of contractors to provide landscape maintenance and construction services. Mayor Potem Johannesen.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. On this issue, you know, one of the things we've been dealing with over the last five or six years of recession is a local hire, local, you know, looking at the local businesses here. And in the past, we've gone through reports like this when we're looking at short lists to see what the outreach has been to local businesses, and I didn't see any of that here. So I guess the question would be, aren't there any local businesses that respond to this or, you know, and what the outreach was?
Yeah, the outreach was through the local West Sacramento paper. We did get one West Sacramento firm that is on this list, it's Western Landscape. So I've called people that I know are landscapers in West Sacramento, tried to get as many of them to apply as possible, and that was the only company that applied.
That's fair enough. Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Just, were you going to add on that, Mr. Ledesma?
No.
I just, I did want to supplement, I do, as we, in the, the newspaper, I really appreciate your efforts to get beyond the newspaper because the local paper, I think in the 21st century is no longer a sufficient way to reach local, local companies. So whether, you know, whether we have a, you know, better internet list, you know, email list of companies, in addition to that, to, because I think the era when a lot of companies were pouring through weekly small-town papers looking for businesses is, may have passed, may have passed us by and we'll make sure we, we have the broadest range. We should still be doing the newspapers for sure, but, but low-cost or no-cost supplements and that I think would be, would help advance the goal that we all share in that Mayor Potem Johannesen just underscored. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item eight is consideration of a lease agreement with the Center for Land Based Learning for an urban farm, determination that the lease agreement is exempt under SEQA and consideration of a grant to CLBL for $30,000. Did you have a question or comment at this time, Mr. Ledesma, or a couple of requests for comment on it as well?
I don't, I, I think this was, I don't at this point, I went to after the public comment.
Okay, all right, so we, first is by Mary Kimball from the Center for Land Based Learning.
Thank you, Mayor and city councilman. This is my first time speaking in front of the West Sacramento City Council. This is great. And I am, as the executive director of the Center for Land Based Learning, I'm extremely pleased that you're taking this item under consideration this evening. We are thrilled to potentially, to be a part of the West Sacramento community. Coming up, literally, we've already hired a project manager, Sarah Bernal, who has been a part of the West Sacramento Farmers Market for the past year and is somebody who, like many of our graduates of our California Farm Academy, which is a beginning farmer training program, are looking for land in urban areas to grow their, their produce, in this case to be actual commercial farmers. And so this has been something that we've been dealing with, with for several years, many of our graduates looking for land to grow their, and start their own farms. As you may or may not know, there is not- As you may or may not know, there is not a lot of options for that in this region, and we are thrilled that the city of West Sacramento and the City Council is very excited about this opportunity with your city land that is currently sitting idle, but we know in the future will likely be developed. So, these are the kinds of opportunities that we can make a better community. We can grow food for local restaurants, we can grow food for Meals on Wheels, we can grow food for the food banks, we can involve the young professionals, oh, they're gone. You know, I mean, there are so many amazing opportunities, not only to create new businesses here, but to create a real community treasure. We're going to be hopefully starting with your approval this evening at the Fifth and C location, but we absolutely intend and already have interest from two other farmers, one of which is a graduate of our California Farm Academy, and one which was a two-year apprentice from the Soilborne Program for the past, like I said, two years. Already interested, wanting land beyond the half acre that we're looking at here in this, in this, tonight. So, I just want to tell you how excited we are, how much we already appreciate the funding that has come from Wells Fargo, very, very generous funding, $50,000 from Wells Fargo, $15,000 from Community Business Bank headquartered right here in West Sacramento, and then, of course, the grant from the city to begin the seed funding. We also are already working with the West Sacramento Rotary. We have made extreme, so many connections in literally two weeks that we know that this, this project is really going to burst onto the scene, and I think create a model here that you can be proud of in this region and beyond. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. I think I know the answer, but it doesn't say for sure. It says at the corner of Fifth and C Streets. I think you're talking about the southwest corner rather than the southeast corner, because the southeast corner, for many years, many decades, there used to be a garage, and I think that land has got a lot of oil soaking to it, and I don't think it would be very good for agriculture. But since it didn't say, I want to make sure we're talking about the southwest corner instead of the southeast corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, those are the only comments we have on the item, but just to be, it is the southeast corner. It was olive oil that was seeping into the ground. No, I'm kidding. It, it, there was, you're correct about the prior use of the land, and it was a, it's, the site hasn't, has been fully remediated and cleaned up, and there's, it's been certified by the state that it's now appropriate for development purposes, so, and, right, and so, and the, both the center and its farmers are aware of both what the prior use, the cleanup, and strategies for, like raised beds for, for making appropriate use. Mr. Ledesma.
Yeah, thank you, and, and thanks, Mary, for coming out and being available to answer questions, is there any from council or from the community? But this is an exciting opportunity, and, you know, I think one of the things that made it a good opportunity for the city to be involved was the fact that your organization is a nonprofit, ready to, to put forward your resources, continue to raise money to help towards it in the future years, is, it was an important one. This is, this is part of our growing, our growing food, coming to our food hub and our agricultural roots in West Sacramento. It leverages that and expands it, and brings it closer to our residents in, in, in West Sacramento. So, I was pleased that your organization stepped in, moved forward, and committed people. I would, I would ask, you know, the leases that we're approving today is continue working with the city, continuing working with our Chamber of Commerce, because obviously the farmers market, I know Sarah, you've been involved with that in the past, it's an important part of what we're trying to do here, it's all, it's all connected. So, as much as you can become part of our community, listen to the residents, listen to the other parts of the community that are trying to do this, would be helpful. So, again, thanks for coming out tonight.
Mayor Protem Johansson.
Yeah, I think this, this is a great in terms of, you know, not only the farm-to-fork, but the healthy eating, active living city that we've got the designation for, and just the educational opportunities to get people more informed about where their food comes from, with the farm-to-fork movement, you know, engaging some of the schools involved. So, I think it's a great use, and looking forward to it.
Mr. Kristof.
Just a couple quick comments. I guess I would caution, because the area should probably be gated, and I know that'll be an issue that you'll probably deal with as you go building your boxes and filling the boxes, and then starting to grow vegetables. But it would be something that I would probably really take a strong look at, because I think that there will probably be some issues that arise. And also, I know you're going to need to have farm implements and tools and things like that, that probably going to put in some kind of a storied shelter or something like that. I would just make sure that it is, is well locked, and, and just make sure that you're aware that what you're trying to do is, it's a good thing, but at the same time, there could be some frustration along the way, and I just want to make sure that you're, you're going into this with your eyes wide open. And we'll have to see how it all progresses from there. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited about it, too. I think this is a, it's a, an example of the sort of thing that we, the kind of thing we should only be doing now, which is stuff that has, is a double, triple bottom line initiative, right? So, it is about, you know, helping on the, on the, making better, better quality local healthy foods available in, in, you know, food deserts. It's about connecting the communities and neighborhoods and kids and others to the food system and where food comes from, understanding the importance and the role that agriculture plays. It's also, it is very much about creating a new career pathway for farmers, right? I mean, that's, I think it's, what we learned from, what I learned at least, from the sessions that we, that Ernesto and the team here organized around our Food Innovation Hub work with the broad range of stakeholders in the community, was just a reminder that, you know, that the days, you know, it used to be a farmer because the, the training that you got for that was on the farm that you grew up on. And that's not, and a lot of, a lot of the children of farmers, well, a lot of the farms have been corporatized, and they're, they're, even the corporations are people, they don't have children, or they've made other choices, you know, for the, and, but on the other hand, others, others in this country and in our region are rediscovering, or discovering new ways to make farming a, you know, a viable, rewarding, fulfilling profession. But they didn't grow up on a farm, and they don't have a mom and dad that own a bunch of acres that they can just start on. And so, creating the opportunities for that career path to happen, building on the really great work that the center has done, and the Soilborne, and others who are, who are, who are training folks to be farmers who want to do this, but who need a start. And this is a, a way to accomplish, accomplish that in a very real way. It is an incubator, and I think we, as we, you know, whether the MOU and the lease, all the, we just need to be very, very clear in all of it, the, that's what we're doing. We're incubating both the farm, the, the new farmers and the, and the place, the space. This isn't intended to be a permanent farm for any individual farmer, and it's not, actually not intended to be a permanent, permanent farm for 30 years either. If it, if it still is in 30 years, that we won't have, the farm will have succeeded, but the rest, the neighborhood will not. And this is, so, so for the individual farmers, the notion is, get your, get into it, build some capital, build some markets, build some relationships with restaurants and with others, and then go, and, and get the opportunity then to move in, to, to move to a, to a larger and potentially permanent space. So, it's the path for that to occur. So, I think all, all of that happens. It is also, though, very much about recycling a piece of abandoned land in, in a neighborhood that, that can't afford to have just empty pieces of, of vacated land. And we said, well, there was a gas station there before, it's never going to be anything again, it's just going to be an empty lot. And empty lots create all kinds of blight in neighborhoods. I mean, it's not just that it's a wasted opportunity, but they do create a place for bad things, illicit things to happen. And so, getting this, this lot to be useful, to create activity in, on the corner, at what is an important corner in our community, and very importantly, to get eyes on, on the lot and in the neighborhood. So, I certainly agree with Mr. Kristof, you know, the, the center and farmers that are on the site should take all appropriate measures, just like, you know, all of us should, around securing our, our, our tools and our, and our property. But the more important thing is to have people there, right? Have people farming, and have, you know, tours of school buses coming to see what this looks like, and, and to bring people, and make it a center of neighborhood activity and, and events and other, and other sorts of activities. So, it creates an energy and a set of eyes on the street in the neighborhood that help to promote security and safety and well-being for the, for the entire neighborhood. And so, I think, for me, it's, it's all of these things, it's recycling, it's incubating, and it's eyes on the street that will, that will contribute to the vitality of the whole neighborhood for really, you know, virtually no cost to us, and in fact, activating a piece of property that, that we hope will happen at some date. Now, the, what the lease doesn't cover, and I think we need, whether it's in the lease or otherwise, we just need to be absolutely sure that the first moment that it's used, that we have, that we have planned for this transition. Both Mary and the City Manager and others have heard, and certainly my colleagues have already harped on this 100 times, and I want to keep doing it, because the biggest mistake we could make is to have, you know, something that would be a really cool start, and then 10 years from now, when we're, or five years from now, and everything around this parcel has developed, and we need this, this, at the, at the, at one of our most important corners in Broderick, and it needs to be available to be a site for a restaurant and some condos, right? That's, that's the neighborhood we're trying to create in that particular place. And what I don't, what we, none of us want to deal with is at that stage have a bunch of folks say, hell, no, 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 but I, but I'm in love with this farm that we've had there, and I don't want to see that happen. We, that, which is what will occur. It happens, you know, with every community garden and urban farm, you know, if you don't make the appropriate preparations, and those preparations start from day one, with the right signage and other, other indicators from the front end that, that make it clear for everybody that sets foot or drives by about what the long-term, and both what the long-term plan is and why that is the plan, right? So, I didn't see that specifically in the lease, and we just, we need to make sure that that occurs from, from the very beginning, because the, you know, because it will get adopted in this particular, and the idea here is that there, you know, when that does happen, when somebody says, I want to build a four-story, you know, building there with a, with a cool restaurant and a, you know, a theater or something in that, in that location, it isn't as though we don't have other pieces of property in the city that have been abandoned and unused and are in other neighborhoods that we hope to revitalize as well. And so, the, the idea is that, that the, you know, that although we're not intending that the farm move every other year, but that it, that it, that it too can, could, could move to other places over time in the community, we will have other opportunities. And so, it's a long-term, it's a permanent commitment to urban farming with the, with this particular location being for, you know, not, it's not going to change next year, but that our hope is that it will, it will help to, to create some interest and eyes for, for future development. Can you say something, Mr. C. Manager, about how, how we can be assured that that will happen?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we, we do include that in the recitals, I was just talking to the City Attorney.
Is it okay?
We could come back and take that provision in, in C, and, and put that in the terms of agreement as well.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think it's both, it's both the agreement, because we want, we want the center, I think the center understands, but we want to make sure that it's in our, it's in our, it's in our agreements with the center and with farmer, and their agreements with, and that it's communicated, it's in the agreements that any farmer signed with them. So, that, that's definitely one part of it, and that's a simple part, but I think the other part of it is that it, that it has to be, it has to be communicated.
In the signage.
Yeah, it, I mean, there may be a different way, but it has to be appropriately and effectively communicated in the, to the neighborhood and to the public as well.
I think we can make that clarification.
Okay. Right, any other, any, any other comments on this item? All right, so then we have before us the consent agenda, items five through nine, minus item seven.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, well, on item eight, if you would make the motion then to be recommended, recommend approve the lease substantially in the form attached so that we can tweak the language a little.
So, that would be the motion by Mayor Protem Johansson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Ledesma. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing down that motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted. Thank you. All right, item 10 is a workshop to consider priorities for 2014 Community Development Block Grant Funding. Ms. Collis.
We're here this evening in preparation for a public hearing and approval of a CDBG grant application that's planned for April 2nd in a few weeks. What we're going to do this evening at the workshop is provide an overview of CDBG funding available this year, 2014, and seek the council's guidance on projects under consideration for funding. This year, we have sort of a unique situation in that we have more funding available than normal for CDBG, and we have several large, fairly significant projects under consideration. And all of these would have a significant impact on the lives of lower-income residents in our community. CDBG funds available in 2014 include $1.2 million in program income received from past CDBG-funded activities. We are allowed to split that over no more than two projects through the program income waiver process with the state. And the state is, since we have so much money on hand, the state is going to expect the city to have a plan for expending those funds within a few months. Secondly is the grant application I mentioned that's due in April. Maximum funding request is $2 million, and we can split that amongst three different activities. We will not be allowed to apply for new money, if we, if that grant was awarded, we would not be allowed to apply for new money until one-half of that grant is spent. So, we want to think through activities that are ready to go and will actually, will spend money down efficiently. There are some recommended priorities in your staff report. These were developed by staff and are recommended by the Housing Advisory Commission based on policy guidance detailed in the staff report. So, I'm not going to go into all those details this evening. We're going to focus on how this CDBG funding can be maximized to meet those goals. We've divided the projects, the potential projects, into three basic categories, the first being large capital projects, because those are going to take up the majority of the funding. The maximum grant request for these type of capital projects is $1.5 million. We could also potentially fund even more in a project if we also included program income. For the grant application for these type of projects, you must have site control and construction cost estimates. They won't be funded otherwise. We also have timing issues. I think there's some bullets there, just go ahead and do them all. We have some timing issues to continue, to consider. The program income is available now, and we can come back to the City Council for recommendations at a future, future meeting for allocating program income. Grant funds, however, applied for this year would not be available till about this time next year, spring of 2015. Again, we need to be considerate of the fact that if we fail to perform on an open grant, we could be held out for the full three years of that grant term before we're allowed to reapply. The capital projects under consideration, first of all, is infrastructure for the Delta Lane Project, estimated at this time at about $600,000. This, due to the timing and the need to get this project off the ground as soon as possible, would probably be most effective for program income use. Landmark Lofts is a project on West Capital Avenue. They need a significant amount of infrastructure. They've also already got one infrastructure grant, but it's only for $2 million, they still need quite a bit more. The project, even with that grant and the CDBG funds that we have available, still has a financial gap. So, if we were to apply for this project and be awarded funds, we would want to make sure that they are able to come up with the funding for that gap to get that project out of the ground, so that we're not held out of future funding applications for three years. Finally, we could, we could fund park improvements. They do not score well at, on grant applications, but that is an eligible use for program income. We would just need to be, have cost estimates for a discrete CDBG-eligible project.
Louise?
Yes. Do you want to go back one?
Yeah, go back one. That Landmark Lofts.
Yes.
What are the infrastructure needs that are on that particular piece of property?
Um, there is a, it has to run for the, for the sewer hookup. Um, there is a, it has to run for the, for the sewer hookup, into the street and down hundreds of feet. So that is what is causing that to be more than you would normally expect. Basically, any project that goes in on that site would, would have to comply with those same requirements, but for an affordable project, it is, it is significant.
For those, for that landmark loft, though, that was the project that was going to have some retail at the bottom and parking on the bottom and then the lofts up top?
Um, it has some retail on the street, front, facing West Capital. It doesn't, and it, yeah, and it has some parking underneath some of the units.
Okay.
So, and it is affordable rentals.
But I don't think that that one was 100% affordable?
Uh, yes, it is 100% affordable except for the retail space.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we'll move on. The, the next category, go ahead, is public services. For public services, three services added together count as one activity. So we're kind of lumping these together as one. Maximum amount for those three activities would be $500,000. Again, with program income, we could start that activity now, or we could apply for grant funds for next year. The costs here estimated are for three-year contracts. Fair Housing Services and preschool scholarships, we've traditionally funded with CDBG funds in the past. The one in the middle, the West Sacramento Homeless Services Coordinator, it's a little bit different than what was in your staff report. This is referring to the position that was in the Homeless Action Plan that was proposed to be, the City Council asked to be funded by the county. The county has stated they are not willing or able to fund this position. So we are presenting this at, for the council's consideration. If you wish to move forward with that action in the Homeless Action Plan, this is one source of funding that might be used. Again, with the timing, if this is something we wanted to start right now, we could use program income on hand. If it's something that can wait a year, we could put this in the grant application.
So, so just the change in, in, was the staff report position, that was the position that already exists at the, at the county that we pay a portion of, and this is a, this position is different, or?
No, this is a person, this is a person dedicated solely to West Sacramento, not the Yolo County Homeless Coordinator position that we've had for many years, who would be a liaison between city and county services related to homelessness. It would probably be focusing on making sure that people that living in the, along West Capital Avenue and along the river have adequate access to services. We have refer, a, a more streamlined referral system than we have today. We would ask that person to work on that and do a lot of coordination of services, bring in the nonprofits and try and maximize those that are available to these folks.
That is one person?
That is one person.
And there's a, amount of $300,000 attached to one person?
That would be a three-year contract.
Oh, it's a three-year contract.
Yes. With, with benefits and...
No, I understand.
Yeah, travel time and things.
Okay, okay, go on.
And the third category is just kind of a catch-all, other proj, other projects. Yolo County, that's where we've got the Yolo County Homeless Coordination Project, and the reason it's not under Public Services is just because of the way the contract was written last time by the county. It doesn't count as a public service. We're having to use our general ad, CDBG program income, general admin right now on that. It, in future years, we might be able to get that as a public service activity.
To get that as a public service activity, would they have to be more involved in service and less involved in advocacy at the city level?
Um, that, that contract funds two different activities. It funds the shelter in Woodland, the former Wayfair Center, and it funds the homeless coordinator. And under CDBG, the shelter is a public service activity, the homeless coordinator is general admin. And the way they wrote it this year, I, we, the last couple of years ago, I couldn't split those up. And so, in, in the future, we might be able to work that out. They, they kind of changed it in midstream last time. So, secondly is the Public Safety Needs Assessment, which was in the 2014 Council Strategic Plan. This is a study that we could request a maximum of $100,000 as a planning study. This is, would be a timing issue. If we requested that grant funds, the study would not be able to get started until this time next year, but it would provide 100,00, up to $100,000 for that. At this time, we don't know exactly how much that would cost, but that would certainly go a long way. It probably, might not cover the whole thing, but it would definitely help. Secondly, would be to continue our, third one, I guess, micro, continue our micro enterprise program that's providing business classes and one-on-one financial counseling to low-income families that own a very small business. We've had dozens of families go through that program. And finally, the, the Business Loan Program, which we're not recommending an application for unless we have a particularly strong over-the-counter project. So now that you've seen kind of how we've grouped these, we wanted to give you an example of how this might be put together. So we have an example of how this might work. This slide provides an example of how projects under consideration could be organized into a strong, high-scoring application this year and hopefully would support the goals of the, of the council. We're not asking necessarily for a recommendation on program income this evening. We think we will come back, once we've determined what goes in the application, come back with suggestions on that at a later date. But for example, if we did use program income for Delta Lane and, or for the homeless coordinator, the West SAC homeless coordinator position, we could do a grant application of $2 million that would provide the infrastructure for Landmark Lofts, fair housing counseling, preschool scholarships, and continue the micro enterprise assistance program. An alternative would be to, you, fund the public safety study instead of micro enterprise. Again, you can have three activities, and you can see, we have three activities there. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions or, and hopefully some direction from the council.
All right, and we also have, we'll have a few requests for public comment on this circuit. Questions for Louise at this time? All right, thank you, Louise. All right, so first is Isaac Blackstock from the Center for Families.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I came down here about eight months ago from Portland, Oregon. My history is I used to work for, doing the homeless prevention rapid rehousing program here in the city of West Sacramento. I did that for a couple of years. And we talk a lot about homelessness as a problem. There's definitely an issue here in West Sacramento. I don't think that anybody knows exactly how to solve it. Homeless prevention as, as a program was not perfect. It was definitely, you know, bailed people out, helped a lot of families, but I think that as a case manager, I saw that it was exploited and that people can become dependent on it. The reason I'm talking today is because I want to talk about this section, the Yolo County Homeless Coordination Project. The program that I came down here, back to Yolo County to do, is rapid rehousing. The reason I like rapid rehousing a lot better than homeless prevention is because it provides short-to-medium-term support for low-income families who are literally homeless, as described by the 2013 homeless definition by HUD. This helps people who are most at risk in the community, people who are in places not hit, fit for human habitation, but it also can help people who are in emergency shelters, family transitional housing, and it especially can help sexual assault victims, people who are in domestic violence shelters, our veterans in our community, the elderly, and the chronically homeless. The services that are provided under this program currently through the Center for Families are helping people acquire, find housing, and then it's, it's really a soft handoff. So it's great because you have people in shelters, instead of just saying, throwing, throwing money at them and saying, good luck, it's a real soft handoff where it's like, this is a case manager. We're going to help you find and obtain that housing, apply for it, and then we're going to teach you some life coaching, financial skills, whatever you need. And, and really, the financial coaching is the cornerstone of how we're running the program right now. We can teach people budgeting and saving, how to access financial institutions, behavioral spending, credit repair, credit building, long-term financial planning such as retirement, college funding for their children. And what I see is that clients are actively participating. They're definitely invested in their futures, and it's working. For the last eight months, I've had no families through repertory housing become homeless in that time. And it gets people off of the streets, out of shelters, and into sustainable housing where they belong, and that's why I really believe in it. Thank you.
Jeff Line.
to celebrate the permanent closing of the homeless soup kitchen masquerading as a New Discovery Church. Here's a recent photo of a drunk homeless criminal sleeping on the lawn of this church before noon. He got so drunk, he slept right through the free lunch, and this happens every day. Note that he stole a shopping cart, another shopping cart, that us hard-working citizens will have to pay for as part of our grocery bill. If you look closely, you can see his empty booze bottle sitting on the steps of the church. The New Discovery Church also gives out blue tarps and blankets to promote and support illegal camping in our neighborhood. You will find countless blue tarp illegal camps along the West Sacramento Riverfront. Here's a photo of a homeless criminal sleeping under his blue tarp right across the street from the church. Do you want this criminal scenario repeated somewhere else in West Sacramento? How about locating the soup kitchen right across the street from your house? Nobody in the city wants to experience these criminal homeless problems in their neighborhood. Don't make the mistake of just moving this soup kitchen to another location, as nothing will change. Let's do the right thing and solve the homeless problem once and for all, just like the city of Placerville did. Follow the same actions included in the Washington Neighborhood Homeless Action Plan. We don't want to see one penny of our hard-earned tax dollars or our taxpayer-funded grant funds, whether federal, state, or local, going towards any homeless services in the city of West Sacramento. No soup kitchens, no homeless day centers, no shelters, and certainly not another city employee homeless coordinator. Please continue to visit our website at www.cleanupwestsac.com.
Don Bosley?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. Some of my friends have joined me here this evening. They are the friends from New Discovery Church. And New Discovery Church provides meals for the homeless out their back door because there's no one else that's providing meals for the homeless in West Sacramento on a regular basis. We know what's happened to some of our services. New Discovery Church is not masquerading as a church. New Discovery Church is a distribution point for a number of churches in the city, mine included, Lighthouse Covenant, where they've generously opened their doors to care for people. And that's relevant to this conversation because while some would say that the city has been inactive in its approach to homelessness, the faith community at the moment would say the exact opposite. We have never been more encouraged by the moment we have arrived at here. Years of thought and partnership and collaboration have brought us to this moment, this moment, where we're so, even though New Discovery's building is being sold and they're going to have to move out in six weeks, we have, we are so encouraged about the climate of partnership that suddenly exists in this city. It's unprecedented, as far as I know, on the issue of homelessness. There is an answer. There is dialogue going on between the churches, one to another. There is dialogue going on between city staff and the faith community and social services. There's incredible dialogue going on suddenly and quickly between the faith community and the city and the new regime that is taking over the Broderick Christian Center. It's very, very exciting and it has tremendous potential. The faith community in, in West Sacramento is, is unique. In one sense, it is comprised mostly of relatively small churches. There are no large churches in West Sacramento. And that means that resources are, are at a premium for the, for the faith community as they do these things. Yet a church like New Discovery draws on their, some of their meager resources to make sure others are fed. That is the kind of city that, that I want to be a part of, this kind of city I grew up in. Though we are an emerging city, we have not lost our small-town values for caring for people, and that cannot change. So I thank you for your leadership in this. I would ask you to deeply consider the unique moment that we've arrived at, that you've helped us arrive at, where this climate of partnership can happen and the CDBG funds that are out there and how they can be used to, to help us find a solution. We're there to be supportive, we're there to take a lead, tell us what you want to do. The faith community is here, ready to go into service. Thank you.
Bill Lowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, again for the record. I don't know how specific it is, but I think we should include language in there to reemphasize the importance of universal design, because there's a lot of people out there, low-income homeless people, that need that wheelchair accessibility. And also, while we're doing this, let's take into consideration our area-wide water shortage and encourage installation of low-flow toilets and that sort of other water-saving devices. Thank you.
Mr. Lowell? All right, so those are the questions, the comments we had under the public testimony. I'm going to turn to the council for their questions or discussion. Mayor Pro Tem Johansson?
Yeah, maybe a question versus Louise. On the issue of timing, is that an issue of the city being able to advance funds once a, a grant is, is basically awarded, but the distribution is out sometime so we can front the money, or is it, we, we don't have that ability?
I'm afraid not, no. Until we have the grant contract in hand and signed from the state and go through what they call clearance of special conditions, we can't spend a dime of our money or theirs. So it, it, it will take till about March of next year.
Okay. All right, and I, I think just, the rest are just comments. I, I totally agree with kind of the, the direction that you're going with this on housing, jobs, and homelessness. I think those are really good areas that we can use this type of money to help supplement it. You know, the continued production of affordable housing is, is important to us, and we've got another gen item that's coming up on, on how we're doing that through the inclusionary program. But the fact is that, you know, being on the West SAC Housing Development Corporation, those projects are tough, economically tough, and, and you really need to use these types of funds to help... you really need to use these types of funds to help supplement that. In terms of jobs assistance, I’m, I’m supportive of microenterprises, you know, support, small business accounts for a, a large number of jobs that are created, and to encourage that, has the double whammy of, of not only creating jobs, but also keeping people from being homeless. And then on the homeless issue, I’m in, I’m in agreement with the gentleman who spoke about rapid rehousing. I was on the Yellow County Tenure Homeless Commission when we were going through this, and, and it’s a, I think it was a successful program. Unfortunately, I think it’s, program’s done now. But, you know, I think the points that were made in terms of helping people with a hand up and not a handout, I think there’s a, a lot of support within the faith communities and the folks that are working on homeless now, homelessness now, that, that it’s not just a question of feeding people, it’s, but it’s about actually helping improve people’s lives. And so that would come, for example, through, you know, supportive housing, or even inner, to be, to intercede before someone becomes homeless, in terms of, you know, getting legal assistance for eviction issues, possible assistance with, with rent, to keep people in homes until they can get their, whatever their issue is together. And those are all much less expensive to deal with than once someone becomes homeless. So I’m, I’m supportive of, of getting the homeless coordinator because I think, you know, I think the plan was two years in, in, in the making, and I think it creates at least a good general framework to do this. But I’m not sure where else this money would come from to, to continue to implement that, and, which I think is, is important, not only in terms of being able to help the homeless and people in need in the city, but also to help the neighbors that are impacted by homelessness, which we have an obligation as well.
Mr. Ledesma.
Thanks, Luis, for the, for the opportunity to kind of weigh in on this. And I, I guess, I, I don’t have, I wish I had a copy of your PowerPoint presentation, because I think what you’re, what you’re really, the, the timing issue question was one that I had in my mind as well. Sort of, your frame, the way this is framed up is that the grant money is becoming available. We have some available. We need to start programming it, right, to, and, and finding the programs that are sort of shovel-ready, for lack of a better term, that kind of fit into this program. Am I, am I, is my assessment of that correct? Is, kind of what we’re, what we’re doing in this workshop is making sure the programs, prioritizing these programs that would fit the CDVG funds?
Well, we have to come before the council with a proposed grant application on April 2nd, and we actually have to public-notice that this weekend of what we’re going to apply, what we’re proposing to apply for. And then, of course, council gets to make the final decision after the public hearing. So staff needs to be working on that application right now. So we’re hoping for some direction on what would be supported for the application. But we just want to make sure the council’s aware that there’s also this other pot of money, the 1.2 million, that we need to be considering. It doesn’t have to be decided now, but it is there for projects that, and it may be more appropriate for some projects than the actual grant application.
Okay. And I guess what would help, in your attachment with all the programs you have listed, the eligible activities and whatever else, it kind of comes back to, Mr. Johannesen brought it up. So, for instance, the micro-business and the enterprise funds that you’re looking at for that, which I’m supportive of. And you, you mentioned that you’ve seen quite a few families go through that program. What, what might help the discussion, at least for me, is this, this be able to kind of understand that, kind of what the success rate or what, how these programs have been performing, what we expect of them going forward. I mean, I, I would say it’s absolutely important for that, that particular piece, just because understanding that that’s, that’s an, that, that amount of money we’re granting for the services, the technical expertise, and the small, the size of the businesses you’re talking about, is very underserved right now. So the, the fact that we’re filling that gap is important. So, you know, I know you, it’s slotted in there, but I think in your, in your table that you had on the presentation, how we could structure it, it’s given a choice between that and something else. I don’t have it open up.
Um, the, the, yeah, it was put in there either or with the public safety assessment, just because there, there’s some similar amounts.
Right.
And we get three activities. So it’s kind, we could do both of those, but then we only have one more activity.
Yeah. And what would, what would help inform my decision upon that is what would, from a, what’s going to also, not just what’s ready or what we can use, but what’s performing well, what might, what the expected outcome is. Obviously, the priorities are around, you know, what you have outlined, which are your, your focus on, the low-income and homelessness and all these other areas that are important to their community. But what’s not, what I’m looking for is, okay, which, which program is going to have the most bang for the buck that’s going to bring us back some results. And, and that’s what, that would help a little bit. And I know we have to make a decision on this, and we have some experience with it. I just, that’s, that’s something I’m just cognizant of. The thing that, that I, the homeless coordinator position, which was in our plan and which I would support, though, what, if we, if, you know, that still has to come back and, and, and I guess what I’m after is, is we’re going to program that, the funding for that, and it, with no, you know, when are we going to, when does it actually go into effect, and how does it go into effect, and what will it be working on? And all those sorts of questions are out there. So I want to make sure that what we do will have an effect on, on the, on the community, and we’re not just reserving money for something we, we hope works. That’s, that’s a little bit of my quandary with some of, how we’re approaching this. But I, I’m mainly supportive of, I don’t want to lose the fact, I’m supportive of, we need to go out to funds, but the things that are working, it’s just to help inform me what’s performing well.
I don’t have the exact numbers on the microenterprise program, but we have done two classes, two rounds of classes. I think there were five or six classes in a, in a session. In English, two rounds in Spanish. Actually, our Spanish-language classes have been the most well-attended, and we’re getting ready to do our third Spanish-language class starting in May. Of those two classes, of those four classes, I know two businesses that have been started. There’s others that are still, you know, some decided it was not going to work for them. Others already had a business, and they were just trying to improve their business. But two new ones were generated. And one of those new businesses, the gentleman decided that they needed to have kind of a roundtable for these small business people that are just getting started, to act as a support group. So he, he’s started a Spanish-language support group for their, for the, his classmates. And they’re meeting regularly. And that was not funded by our grant. That was, that occurred, though, as an outgrowth.
Outside, as, as a result. But again, but, so the ripple effect of our investment and us going for that had, had that effect. And that’s, and that’s important, to make sure we articulate on how we’re, we’re using these funds and we’re committing, so.
Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, Luis, this, this seems like that, these are substantial dollars. These are, they’re big amounts. Can we have things like a grant for flood protection? Or can we have a things like grant for additional police officers or something like that, rather than always going in this direction through the Department of, you know, through, through the State Department?
Well, that, the, for this, for HCD, for CDVG funds, that’s the only way we can get them. And unfortunately, police services are not eligible for flood protection. I don’t think there would be an eligible activity for, that would be eligible for CDVG funds, because it’s something that would have to be done in a short period of time, and we would directly have to show how many low-income people it served, and if any people that are not income-eligible.
Well, if it’s flood protection, it serves every low-income person in the community.
But it would also serve people that don’t qualify, so then we would have to have some kind of assessment on those folks for it to, for it to work under CDVG, which you can do. But for, similar to what we did with Arlington Oaks when we did the, upgraded all the septic tanks, we paid the assessments, and we paid for the laterals with CDVG funds, but only for the owner-occupied, low-income units. And rental units or rental, units that were owner-occupied and over the CDVG income limits had to pay their own. So it, it can be done. It’s very complicated.
I, I guess for me, for this particular item, I mean, first of all, I’d like to see, if we’re going to get some grants, it be in other areas. Okay? And now, but since we have this area that we have to deal with, I would say that, you know, the Delta Lane would probably be something that would be workable. Same goes for landmark lofts. That would be workable. Microenterprise, I think that would be okay. And then maybe business assistance. But if you could tie those four together to get whatever amount of money you want to get, or bring back to us, those are the areas that I would have a tendency to look into.
All right. Just first, a process issue. When we, we switched the commissions away from monthly and, and bimonthly schedules at the request of the city manager’s office, it was, the, the express agreement was that that would not affect their ability to participate in the flow of city policymaking, because special meetings would be called whenever needed. So it’s, it, to me, it’s a, it’s a prop, to have EDA, the Economic Development Commission, not see this item until March 26th, when it has to be in its, essentially in its final form over the weekend, is, does a disservice to their ability to provide effective input. And a special meeting should have been called in that case. So just as a, as a matter of process, that was the deal, was we would, we might have a lot of special meetings, but in exchange for not having a, meetings with no agenda that consumed a lot of staff time in the evenings. So it’s, uh, uh, just, just to underscore that, because we, we value their, 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 their views and perspectives of citizens, and also fresh eyes for staff and for us to, to take a look at these issues. On the actual substance, I guess, sort of fun, one fundamental thing for me is I’m, I’m skeptical on landmark lofts and our ability to deliver in the timeframe. And for all the reasons that Luis mentioned at, at the beginning of the, of the presentation, I, I, I don’t want to apply for it, and, and just for the, just to say that we did, and have it not score well, or worse, have it score well, us get it, and then we’re not able to deliver a project. That project may just not be ready in the market. And, I mean, we, we have a variety of other efforts to try to, you know, help it, but there’s only so far we can tip a project. And so, you know, we, we, and that’s not our job, and our, our job is to help, help to move the market. That’s not a location where we’re making other concurrent investments at the moment. And so it’s, it’s not as though it’s activating something else that we’re doing. And so although it’s an important, it’s a valuable project, I’ve been, we’ve all been strong supporters of it. To me, if you’re going to bring, if you, if you include that on the list, you should only do so if you really, if, if staff really believes that we have a, a solid chance of maintaining our very good record of delivering on, on our, on, on the projects that we propose. Because that’s a lot, that’s committing a lot of, a lot of resources out of this, out of this bucket, and it’s putting our, our reputation and therefore our ability to secure future competitive grants on the line. And that’s a large part of this, of the, the slide that Mr. Ledesma was referencing, that has the, your, your preliminary recommendations that we can’t see anymore. That was, that was a big part of that number. So I, to me, I, I would free that one up, unless, unless the judgment of the economic development and the community development team is that that project is more likely than it sounds like it is to be delivered in terms of that, that period. For the Delta Lane, I’m very supportive of, but I do think program income is the more appropriate source, just given the timing for, for that, for that project. I, I also, you know, feel like some of the stuff that’s not, would not be competitive, but that’s important for the purpose of CDVG, things like the Bright Park improvements, we, we really ought to be looking at for, for program improvement investments as well. That’s, that’s an example. But again, that, it doesn’t make sense for us to go spend $100,000 at Bright Park if we don’t have, if we don’t have the resources to do the rest of Phase One of Bright Park either. So, and as you’re, as you’re working on this on Saturday, 11 o’clock at night, I think the, for me, that’s a priority. I’d like to see us use, well, you wouldn’t be working on that part of it if it’s program income. But I do think we, we ought to, we ought to see if we can use some of the, the limited discretion that we do have in that, in that domain. And then there’s the public services item, and, and I guess more, more broadly, the whole homeless question. And we’ve adopted our action plan. We’ve been at, work at this. This is a, a very high priority for the, for this, for the city. And we have to, we, we need to make some investments. We know we need to make some investments, and this is the appropriate source for that, for that purpose, if we’re going to make progress in those, on the domains of our action plan and the strategic plan that the council has, has adopted. So I’m, I’m supportive of at least this level of investment, and actually probably more, if we were to change the landmark lofts. If landmark lofts doesn’t fit, then I would move more of those resources in our application into the, in the public services side. Having said that, I want to be really clear-eyed about it, and, and, and not the sort of work that we have done mainly in the past with the idea that we will solve everything, you know, with one program, or that, that always assumes that, you know, everyone is just one counseling session away from having their life turned around. If only we could do that one thing, it will fix it all. That’s just not the reality for, for, for most folks in this situation. And we need to be realistic, but that also means we need to be more targeted. And so I, I would actually personally prefer to see things like, we’re, we have a program to deal with homeless veterans, and we’re going to, we’re going to solve the problem for whatever the number is, for the 11 homeless veterans. And yes, we have other, many other populate, distinct populations of homeless individuals in our city, but we’re going to tackle that one. We’re going to prove that we can actually solve this problem, you know, potentially one, one population at a time, rather than constantly refraining, but, oh, but what about, what about that subpopulation? What about that one? What about that one? What about that one? And it leads us to never do anything that’s meaningful, only things that make us feel good about ourselves. And so I, I would hope we would have some very clear actions and expectations about what we’re going to accomplish. I haven’t been a big fan of the county homeless coordination work. You know, it’s not to anybody’s detriment, but I just, I think we need to be, it needs to be around, you know, bundling and navigating these actual services and changing the way that we’re delivering services and connecting people to them, and not about county-wide analysis, certainly not about, you know, sending us letter, us paying somebody to send us a letter telling us, you know, their opinion about stuff that we’re about to vote on. That’s, that’s what we need. We need people that are going to come, that are going to, you know, work on real actionable solutions. And I like rapid rehousing and other of these initiatives that we are learning are working in other places in specific ways for specific populations. Rapid rehousing is not the solution for everybody. It’s not, maybe not even half the homeless population. That doesn’t matter. It’s a solution for a large, you know, a significant enough proportion that, you know, that sort of, of attempt makes a lot of sense. So I would like us to, to do more of that work. One area where I do think that’s important is, you know, it’s, I, I’ve come to the, the point of view that some of what we and every other city in the country has done around our affordable housing and other policies has contributed to the, to the problematic nature of, of homelessness in our communities. In the, since that we’ve been very focused, appropriately so, on the, of the affordable housing that we either produce ourselves or induce others to produce and support them. And we have made that work, and in ways that it didn’t, wasn’t working in the 60s and 70s, by insisting on very high standards of, of behavior and entry. Right? Oh, you’re a, you’re a severe drug user? Well, you can’t be in this affordable housing complex. That has been important for the safety and the health and the well-being of the residents of that complex, and for the support of the, of building those sorts of communities in, within neighborhoods. But it’s all, it begs the question, well, where does that, you know, where does that severely mentally ill drug user go then? All right? Because we don’t, we, we, we’re not creating any facilities that are essentially are no questions asked. Come in here, and we’ll, we’ll get you, we’ll put a roof over your head, and a meal, and we’ll connect you to programs. We don’t have anything like that, that, that we are involved in, because we have, with all the right intentions and all, and all the right purposes, frankly, have insisted that everything that we touch have high standard, you know, have these high standards. I still support all of those standards, but, but we need some, but what that has left is the homeless population that remains on the street, in many cases, is, is the toughest to manage, and the ones, the individuals most likely to have other challenges and to create more severe problems in the neighborhoods that they’re inhabiting than homeless individuals that, that, you know, might have, might have been in our community 20 years ago, but now are, are living in, you know, good quality, you know, housing that the West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation or others have, have created. And so the extent to which we can really, you know, target that population in particular, and rapid rehousing is actually a good, good example of those kinds of approaches, but where, where we really focus, or housing first, you know, where, where the, the purpose is not, I mean, it’s recognizing that we’ve create, we have helped to, to isolate a population of individuals who have particularly severe challenges and particularly severe impacts that we have to do something about. And I don’t want to change any of our entry policies around any of our housing program, our housing programs. That’s not the right, that’s not the right answer. But we can’t, we can no longer turn a blind eye and just assume they’ll disappear. If we, if we don’t allow them to, to rent in one of the apartments in our city, that they will just suddenly go to some, that they will move to Placerville or somewhere else. It’s not going to happen. We have to deal with that problem in, in a direct way. And, you know, and so I would rather be making investments like that, rather than... And so I would rather be making investments like that rather than, you know, coordinate our out in Woodland or something like that. So to me, the investment in the public services side of this stuff makes sense, but we need to do it in a way that is very actionable, action-oriented, measurable with real metrics, and it's highly focused and strategic, and it doesn't purport or pretend that it's going to solve everything all at once, because it's not going to. And that leads to an unfocused approach that hasn't, in many ways, hasn't produced anywhere near the level of results that we should expect, given the massive commitment that Mr. Bosley talked about is within our community. We should be getting better results for homeless individuals and for the community as a whole. And I think we can, but it's, I think it will require a more precise approach than we've got here and more resources. And the Mercy Coalition, is their proposal that's on here, is that under, is that the third row of the Public Services section? Or is that included in that, or is it something different? I didn't see where the footnote was referring to.
Well, it was, when we talked about the four capital projects, it was one of the capital projects, the Homeless Services Center.
Okay, so Mercy is up in the top one.
The fact that it would be eligible for an application, provided they have site control, and if rehab is needed, that they have firm cost estimates in time for the grant application.
And is that even possible?
They, I know that they are working hard, but I don't have that yet.
Okay.
I don't know if it's possible.
Yeah, so to me, same, I'm supportive of the kinds of work that they've outlined here, but same as landmark loss. It's not, I don't want to apply on a hope and a prayer, because we probably wouldn't get it, and if we do, we wouldn't be able to deliver. So, you know, if there's something real there that's going to, that meets our, I'm certainly open to it myself, personally. But it has to, you know, we would have to be very confident that we would, because it's a lot of, it's a lot of resources out of this pot. We'd have to be very, very confident that we'd actually be able to deliver something, and that that something would work, and that would, it would be something that we would be proud of, given the objectives that the council and the whole community have, so. All right, any other comments? Mr. Manager, do you have, Mr. City Manager? Mr. Tuttle, do you have enough comments and direction? All right, and do you want a motion on funding priorities today? You have a, that's.
If the council would like to make a motion on what you would like prioritized, fine, it's not required.
If it's not required, then I'm going to rely on the city manager to integrate and synthesize what's been, the direction that's been provided, because I think otherwise we might be here until 2:00 in the morning. Any conclusive, because several of the points that have been made are contingent on the analysis of, you know, whether it's landmark loss or the center, or whether there are options for, you know, what would be spent on the police assessment or on the flood control. I mean, there's a lot of other questions that you would need to answer, so I don't think we would be able to vote on something tonight anyway, given the amount of contingencies that have been in the comments that we've heard tonight.
Well, you don't have to acquire or ask for all of the money. I mean, you could just pick one. You could pick the infrastructure for.
Delta.
Yeah, Delta Lane, and that'd be the only one to apply for. You don't have to apply for them all.
No, there's no requirement that we apply for the full $2 million, but if we do get funded, we don't get to apply for any more funds for, until that grant is half-spent. So we want to, if, we want to be aware of that. That's all the money we will get for a while.
Really, that's not a bad idea.
All right. Okay, thank you, Ms. Collis. All right, now we're going to proceed to Item 11, which is consideration of approval of Amendment Number Two to the California Indian Heritage Center Master Agreement. Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The California Indian Heritage Center project has been in the works for over six years. And for those who may not be familiar with the location of this project, the location map is shown in Attachment One of the Agenda Report. It's the 43 acres formerly owned by the Redevelopment Agency in the northeast area of the city, right along the river, north of the Broderick Boat Ramp. Before I get started too much further, I wanted to point out that in the Agenda Report, the property acquisition agreement was copied in there twice. It's not really part of the Lot 299 agreement, so it's really a standalone exhibit. So that was just a copying error, and I wanted to point that out. So the master agreement with State Parks was originally approved in June 2008. In July 2010, there was an amendment, the first amendment to the agreement, was approved, and it extended certain performance dates. And that was due to the progress that was being made on the general plan for the project. In September 2011, a memorandum of understanding was approved to address the issue of what happens to the property should the project not be feasible, or should it be built and then it closes at some point in the future. The memorandum of understanding also covered the issue of the unpaid obligation on Lot 299, which came from the river subdivision that State Parks acquired from the JTS communities for the project, to add to the project. So then, fast-forwarding to 2012, when the state eliminated redevelopment, that essentially froze this transaction. And while State Parks and the city were trying to figure out how to complete the transaction in accordance with the master agreement you originally approved pursuant to all the requirements under AB 26 and AB 1484. So that created essentially a two-year hiatus. And that's what we've kind of been working on here and there since that time. So finally, in October of last year, you, the City Council, were finally able to accept the property from the successor agency for the purposes of fulfilling this transaction. So that has led to now where we're finally able to come forth with amendments that then can work towards completing this transaction. So just to briefly summarize the amendments that are proposed tonight, we're replacing the redevelopment agency with the city as party to the agreements and the exhibits. We're removing the original option agreement and ground lease to the state and replacing it with a property acquisition agreement, because the state would like to advance taking down the property sooner rather than later. We are splitting the terms of the Lot 299 memorandum of understanding into a separate Lot 299 agreement, which is an exhibit now to the master agreement. It contains the project enhancements, all of those that were discussed, and part of the MOU. And also, it contains an option agreement, or there's a separate, we're splitting it into an option agreement in favor of the city for reacquiring the property should the project never be built or close after a period of time. One point to note on that, when we were last before you in discussing the issue of feasibility of the project, the prior documents contained a term regarding that State Parks would operate it in perpetuity. This was reviewed by Department of General Services, and perpetuity is not within their prescriptive guidelines. So you'll note in there that they are proposing 100 years as the term. So that's a change you want to be aware of. There are revisions to the performance milestones, given the two-year hiatus with redevelopment elimination, but there's also a shortening of one of the milestones for acquisition of the property, given the elimination of the option and ground lease. There is also an added exhibit, which is the Policing and Emergency Response Memorandum of Understanding that has been negotiated between State Parks and our police department. After the Agenda Report was produced and distributed to the City Council, State Parks requested some clarifying edits to Sections 12 and 15 of the master agreement, and those are contained on Pages Three and Four of the master agreement. Those have to do with, the clarifying edits have to do with when the beginning of design and construction of the riverfront path and the bike path would occur. Currently, the designs need to begin, the current agreements say that they will begin after recordation of the gift deed, and that the construction of the riverfront path would be concurrent with the construction of the actual project. State Parks has asked to insert language that would recognize their need to get the Public Works Board authorization to begin design, that they couldn't start the design without their authorization first. And then also, for the construction of the riverfront path, they would like language added that recognizes the need, recognizes the phasing that's contemplated with the project. Phase One of the California Indian Heritage Center project would occur on Lot 299, which is on the landward side of the levee, where the riverfront path would be constructed on the waterward side of the levee. They intend to advance those concurrently, but there could be some permitting through the Central Valley Flood Control Board and/or some environmental compliance that could cause the Phase One portion of the project and the riverfront path not to be able to be constructed concurrently. But they fully intend to pursue that. So it's more of a clarifying that there could be a slight separation there. So city staff understands their requests and are supportive of those minor language additions. Given that and the fact that they still need to go to the Public Works Board, there could be some other minor things that come up between now and the end of the year, that the end of the year, December, is when they propose to try to take down the property through the acquisition agreement. The city attorney has some suggested language, which we have used before in situations like this, which allows some minor amendments, as long as substantial, to form. And so he can read that into the record if you want to pursue that. So in conclusion, State Parks representatives are here this evening. They do not have a presentation, but they're available for questions. And that includes the chairman of the California Indian Heritage Center Foundation Board, Mr. Larry Myers, and also his foundation board cohort, Dan Ramos. And the State Parks team is Maria Baranowski, Dana Jones, the district superintendent, and Sarah Fonseca. So with that, I will conclude, and if there's any questions, I'm available.
Questions?
Mr. Kristoff? I do have one. First of all, thank you. That was a very good presentation. One of the things I didn't see in the agreement was, one of the things that I know we had talked about was, we wanted to make sure that there were going to be troopers that patrolled the site. They were gonna, there was going to be, you know, a couple of state troopers, I guess you call them, or Rangers, maybe. And I didn't see that in here. I could have missed it, I don't know. But anyway, I was hoping that that kind of language would make it into there, because, I mean, I think it's very important that Rangers do do the patrolling and making sure that Rangers have police powers, because there are issues there now. And I think that police powers will probably be necessary for a period of time, especially by the boat ramp and different things like that. So anyway, that was one of them. I mean, and we've been dealing with this project for a long time. Is it going to happen?
We believe so.
Okay, all right.
We have, with the hiatus of redevelopment, I feel pretty good. I mean, we have made some significant strides once we've been able to navigate AB 26 and AB 1484.
Very good.
With regard to the policing, there is some reference to that in the memorandum of understanding that's contained in Attachment Three that the police department negotiated. So if you go to Attachment Three, Page Two, under General Operations, there's a discussion on security, and it indicates there that the Department of Parks and Recreation will provide patrol and security services at a level comparable to other State Park units with similar characteristics. And it also says that they will patrol during the day between 7:30 a.m. and 5:30 p.m.
And, Mr. Kristoff, I would add, if you turn the one page back, it does describe them as State Park peace officers, whose peace officer authority extends throughout the state. So they are peace officers.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So the, and that, the provision around the patrolling is, if the state were to stop doing that, or the legislature unfunded that, that's not one of the option triggers, right? What's the mechanism for how we would enforce that?
That's a good question. It's not one of the option triggers.
Yeah, there is a provision in the master agreement that talked about creating an MOU that described the level of service that was to be expected. Now, it was a level of service comparable to other facilities. So if they, for example, stopped providing service in Old Town, or Old Sacramento, that's an area that I believe, as I recall the master agreement, specifically called out as a similar type of facility. But it would be, there is an expectation that they will provide a certain level of service. So we'd be looking at the master agreement, that's the, you know, the source of authority. It would take a fairly, it would take a fairly significant decision on the state's part to stop patrolling urban State Parks.
So, yeah, but, I mean, a couple of years ago, we would have taken a significant decision by the state to announce it was going to close dozens, scores of parks, too, and that we wouldn't have anticipated that being a realistic possibility. I just, that's such a critical part of this project, and I want to be really sure that we're assuring that, you know, as long as the state has the property. And for real, so if there, if it's paid to other facilities and we're the only ones that has, where the facility has a hinterland like this, and the state makes a declaration, oh, for all of our facilities, we will, we're going to be focusing all of our patrolling, you know, simply, you know, within 100 feet of the building or something like that, you know, something that would have, could have broad application, but in our particular instance, would mean no more patrols of the riverfront area and the trails and whatever that are attached to the project. So I'm just trying to get really clear on how we can assure that that occurs.
I don't know if you want to, it looks like somebody from State Parks may want to comment on that.
Maybe you want to open up.
Yeah, we're not in a public hearing, but you would need to come to the microphone.
Yeah, this is, this district superintendent.
I recognize the uniform.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. California State Park Rangers are all peace officers. They have all been trained, they have all, all have statewide peace officer authority, and we are responsible for patrolling all State Park lands within the state. So there wouldn't be a time when we'd say, we're only going to patrol a part of our land, that is part of our responsibility.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, but the state, this is no disrespect to the department, the state has repeatedly abrogated what seemed obvious as, and it's historic responsibilities in, in fact, almost every single one of its commitments to the city has been abrogated over the last five years in one way or another. So it's just, the state's current and historic and 500-year practices is just not good enough? I mean, to be very plain about it, just, I mean, we, because we could not be, we could not be placed in a situation where the facility was being patrolled in the immediate vicinity of the facility was being patrolled, but the rest of the land was not. And I.
Yeah, it's real interesting, because most State Parks are much more than just a building or a facility. Most of them are land, hundreds and thousands of acres of land, and very few State Parks are just the building themselves. So I would, you know, barring them deciding to close half the department, at which time all that land. all that land would be dispersed into, into whatever, although I can't imagine that happening because even though they did say they were gonna close 70 parks, not one of them was closed.
Sure, but they also said they were gonna eliminate redevelopment and take all of our property away, eighty, you know, forty some odd parcels, and they, they did. And actually, every source of, every categorical fund that the state's ever had for cities has also been taken away. So, I mean, it's, oh, enterprise zone, it's gone. I mean, every, every single commitment the state has made to us, I think without exception, has been abrogated. I'm sure I'm being slightly hyperbolic, but not much. So, and I wish I could trust the legislature to be as committed to you as, as the people of California would want them to be, you know, 10 years from now, that's all, so.
And I can tell you that our, our staff is definitely committed to our parks, and as far as the legislature, I can't.
Yes, I'm just kidding.
Where they're gonna go with that, so.
One more question that I had, not for that, but for Charlene. Wasn't there some parking issues on lot 229? Did all of those get resolved?
Um, hmm, now you're taking me back.
I know, me too. Can't remember. Alzheimer's.
I don't, I don't, our recollection is that there was concern about on-street parking. But I don't think it's, has really been identified yet as an issue. It was more of a concern, and we will still have input into the design phase of the project.
All right, okay. All right, thank you.
So on the agreement itself, and I'm, you may have explained this earlier, but I was trying to match up the, the option provision, the triggers that are in the, so they're articulated in the property acquisition agreement and also in the new option agreement? Or is it the old, or am I looking at the old option agreement? Because the option agreement that has them in it is also, has a March 2014 date contained within it, so I thought it was not an old option agreement. But they're not, they're not identical. But it also, for me, flagged that in the acquisition agreement, those option triggers, that's in paragraph E on page three of 14, that the trigger, for example, in, in, in small one and in small three, seemed, the date seemed reversed. So you had to, if you didn't have your money, if you didn't have the money to build phase, the first phase by 2022, then we could trigger the option. Or if you hadn't completed and opened to the public the first phase by 2018, which is four years earlier, that we would have the ability to trigger the option. And that those, they're, they're the opposite in the option agreement, and they don't make sense in this, in this sequencing, that you, you would have had an obligation to construct and complete and open four years earlier.
Yeah, I think they are reversed here, and we'll need to fix that.
Okay. Then I, one other question, in terms of, I mean, 2022, for the completion and opening of the first phase is still, you know, it's eight years from now, and the state is agreeing in these, in these agreements that the sole use of the property is for the California Indian Heritage Center. Are there any provisions, if, if other interim uses that we mutually desired, is there an easy mechanism for that to occur? Or if we wanted to pursue those, you know, for example, if we wanted to do the urban farm, something like the urban farm, if we wanted to do that here, is that, is that doable within the framework of these agreements? Or would it be, would it require a whole new set of Public Works Board approvals and an entirely new set of agreements? How complex are we making that by the language that's in our, in these agreements?
Yeah, these agreements would have to go back through review with Department of General Services, Department of Finance, possibly Public Works Board. We did talk to State Parks about potential interim uses like an urban farming activity, and they said that outside of these agreements, just contractually, they can enter into those types of interim uses.
But I guess what I'm saying is, within these agreements, can they do that? Because the agreements say that they, that they can, if I remember correctly, that they can only use this property for the center. And so what I'm trying to get at is, is, is so that they don't have to go back to some...
Oh, I see, within our agreements.
Right, within these agreements, I mean.
Yes, because, because that, the provision you're talking about is a right of the city to enforce. So we can always essentially waive that right. We could waive it pursuant to an agreement that said, essentially, we're waiving it so that you can build an urban farm.
Okay. All right, this is an example.
I can't speak to what approval process that would require on the state's part, but I think the documents themselves would permit that.
Okay. All right. All right, then we have before us the recommended action, item 11, just approval of amendment number two.
And then with the...
With the language.
Couple of things you've pointed out in the property acquisition agreement.
Yes.
And also the minor clarifying edits in sections 12 and 15, and then the language...
Yeah, I'd suggest if you add the recommended action at the end of the recommended action, together with non-substantive modifications and revisions to the master agreement and its exhibits necessary to effectuate the transaction described in the staff report.
All right, is there a motion then?
Some moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Johannesen. So, you know, further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or none, the motion carries. All right, thanks, Charlene, thanks, Jim, thanks to the D.C. State Parks and the Indian Heritage Center and the board. Appreciate the ongoing partnership and the persistence on a, on a project that's gonna be really terrific, certainly for our community, but for all of California and its history and its future. So thank you so much again. Appreciate it. All right, item 12 is presentation and discussion on draft ordinance 14-4 proposing changes to the inclusionary housing ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we're presenting the proposed amendments to the Inclusionary Housing Program and asking the council for feedback. As the council may recall, the majority of the proposed amendments were previously presented as part of the city's housing element update in the latter part of last year. The Inclusionary Housing Program is guided by chapters 1510 and 1540, and while the program has been generally successful, it has been negatively affected by several factors, but primarily by the dissolution of the redevelopment agency and the economic and housing market conditions. Despite these challenges, there continues to be a need to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing to our lower-income residents. Chapters 1510 and 1540 focus primarily on unit production and offer few alternatives to developers. The proposed amendments include elimination of chapter 1510, given the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, and amending 1540 to focus production on very low and low-income units, eliminating the moderate income requirement. Additionally, it would offer several more alternatives to production. The slide shows some of the possible alternatives to onsite production that were previously presented, and you'll notice that one of these includes the payment of a fee in lieu of producing units by participating in the Housing Trust Fund program. Funds collected in the Housing Trust Fund program would be used to promote and support affordable housing development in various ways. Again, this slide depicting some of the most popular and common ways that we would, we would do this, and we have done this in the past. Staff secured the services of economic and planning systems to review and analyze staff's housing trust fund fee estimate. And based on the EPS analysis, we are proposing a fee of $4,0989 per market rate unit. The fee includes a 3% administration fee and an annual inflation increase based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. Additionally, the Housing Trust Fund program would offer an urban infill incentive to reduce the fee for higher-density projects in the urban infill area, and my next slide will show what that area is. The incentive would be given, will begin, I'm sorry, at a 20% discount for projects with a minimum density of 20 units to the acre and cap at 80% for projects above 80 units to the acre. The table at the bottom of the slide shows the full range that we are currently proposing. This is the urban infill area. This is also part of the Community Investment Action Plan. In conjunction with the proposed amendments to the Inclusionary Housing Program, staff is recommending that projects with existing affordable housing agreements be allowed to take advantage of the proposed alternatives. We feel that this would provide an additional incentive to continue or begin building housing units and possibly provide additional funds to the Housing Trust Fund programs for projects such as Delta Lane or Landmark Lofts. Staff presented the proposed amendments to the Housing Advisory Commission at its March 10th meeting. We had also previously presented these proposed amendments during our housing element update to the Housing Advisory Commission. We have also received some feedback from other stakeholders. Comments were generally supportive, given the current housing market conditions. However, there was some concern raised that the Inclusionary Housing Program needs to continue to enable economic integration and avoid over-concentration of affordable housing units in just one area of the city. Another concern that was brought up was the fact that some, especially in larger projects where the economies would facilitate production of units, developers would take the easy option and pay the fee. Lastly, there was also a concern about approving alternatives at the administrative level without any public input, either through the council or, or the Planning Commission. Another concern that was raised was that the, in lieu of fee, would put the city as, at a competitive disadvantage in the region when combined with the existing fee structure. And lastly, a proposed alternative was presented to the staff for the urban infill incentive discount. The proposal discounts at lower densities, and the table at the bottom of the slide is the proposed discount that was provided to us for consideration. In summary, the proposed amendments are intended to focus the city's resources on households most in need of assistance, generate revenue for new affordable housing projects given the loss of redevelopment funds, and make the program easier to administer, given the staff and budget constraints. This concludes our presentation, and we will gladly take your comments and try to answer any questions.
All right, are there questions for staff at this time? All right, we have a couple of questions to speak on this. The first is by Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record again. And as you might expect, I, since I haven't heard anything specifically about it, I think we should include more universal design housing in these projects, and if, if somebody doesn't wants to be excused from that, then they should pay a fee, allowing it to be less expensive for those who are including that, and that would result in better visitability of those units. And that's an advantage, and we should also take into consideration the nearness to and from the bus stops and shelters and so forth. Thank you.
Mr. Lowell?
Mayor, council, Scott White with the North State Building Industry Association. I think you guys are all familiar, but I, the, the North State Building Industry Association represents the home building industry in the greater Sacramento region. You know, I want to start off tonight by thanking your staff. Throughout this process, there's been good outreach, a lot of willingness to take in all different perspectives. This is not an easy issue. They did a great job with the housing element. This is, you know, another thing that, the product in front of you is very balanced. You know, it's something that, from our perspective, we see it as, you know, a step in the right direction. There's flexibility, there is a fee option for those who would like to choose it. Is it a higher fee than, you know, the building industry would like to pay? Yeah, it is. In 2005, last time this ordinance was in front of you, I'm sure a representative from the Building Industry Association said, you know, nothing at all. So, you know, there is a middle ground. This is a balance. Our industry knows that, you know, we are one part of this solution, we're one contribution to a need that's out there, a part of a larger societal goal. So we understand that, and we're here to, you know, be a part of that solution. You know, one thing that we do want to emphasize is the local housing market. Despite what you have read, you know, it's still far from recovered. It has a pulse, you know, we're, we're back, and there's, there's people planning projects again. But, you know, a normal regional housing market, you're producing, you know, nine to 11,000 units a year, region-wide, a SECOG projection, as, as our mayor knows well. Right now, last year, we project, we produced over, a little over 3,000 units. This year, we're right on that same track. So we're, you know, about a third of a, a normal market. So, you know, this ordinance and others, it's still a big burden to bear, and the industry is still far from recovered. So something just to be cognizant about. Staff illustrated, you know, the needs for change and why these, you know, specific amendments were good for, for the city. You know, some that we thought were very important is to be regionally competitive. Almost every jurisdiction in the Sacramento region either has a fee option or, you know, something less of an obligation on the home building industry. It creates a permanent funding source for affordable housing that we don't have in the city of West Sacramento today. Redevelopment was something that you guys used better than anybody. I know with this permanent funding source, you would use it, you know, to the best of your ability. I know you'd use it very, very well. And lastly, you know, this is something we think's gonna be very effective in producing all types of housing. You know, more market-rate housing you get, the more affordable housing you get, and I think, you know, both will rise and fall together. This will not be a roadblock to market rate, so we see it going in a very beneficial way for, for all parties and all different housing types. So with that said, hope you go forward with the staff recommendation today, and thanks for the time.
Thank you. All right, so we'll return to the council for further questions or discussion. Mayor Pro Tem Johannesen?
Yeah, I'd like to thank staff for, for reaching out. I think it sounds like you've done a good job at this, and it's good to hear that we've got a balance. Usually, when we talk about affordable housing or inclusionary, it's been pretty tense over the last five or six years, but it's, I'm glad to see that we were able to come to, to come to that balance. I'm also glad to see that where you're going with the density, too, I think it's really going to be needed, particularly when we start looking at streetcar routes and things that we can really capitalize on that. And I did, you wanted to address the concentration issue. You know, the thing about inclusionary housing, the way it was, was basically developing the, you know, it's right in the project itself. So this does allow a lot more flexibility in terms of paying a fee instead of the actual production onsite. But still, I think what we want to try to do, at least from my perspective, is to spread affordability throughout the city. Because, you know, I think well-managed affordable housing is pretty much indistinguishable from regular housing, and we've seen that through some of the projects that, like West Sac Housing Development Corporation have managed. And they don't, they can be basically indistinguishable, smaller, maybe some format changes, but affordability doesn't need to, you know, to mean low, low quality. So, but so you want to try to, I think, diverse, disperse that throughout the area. And then also, in terms of the fee, yeah, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Marty, as we get, start going through this general plan, we're gonna be looking at... get, start going through this general plan, we're going to be looking at traffic impact fees, for example, and looking at lowering the level of service in a number of areas. And that may provide some opportunity to start addressing these fees at that point, and not necessity to have, you know, 20-lane streets going through our town, but, you know, something that's more compatible with urban density. So, I think relief could be on the horizon, in terms of some relief. We're getting there, and I think this year, we've got, the general plan is, I think, a priority to move on that. So, I think it's good news in terms of fees.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, Row. Has our inclusionary policy always been 15%?
Correct. Both 1510 and 1540 required a 15% production requirement.
Well, didn't we have...
Different affordability, affordability levels, but they both required 15%.
So, I, I thought I read in here, and then, and I couldn't find, I can't find it now, that the, the moderate level has been reduced?
Under the proposed amendments, the moderate income requirement would be actually eliminated. There would be no moderate income requirement.
Yeah, there would be no moderate. So, all we would have, low and very low.
The only production requirements would be very low and low, correct?
Well, as far as inclusionary goes, if we're going to use the 15%, I think that what we ought to do is have 5% for low, or very low, and 10% for moderate. I, I, I disagree that here we're putting an inclusionary ordinance together, and it really hasn't gone down. We haven't taken inclusionary and reduced the amount of inclusionary housing in a project. That's not something that I favor at all. I mean, I thought even when we did the housing element, we talked about how it was, at one figure, it was going, going to go down. And now it comes back into an inclusionary program, and that's not the case at all. It's, this is something that has done away with the moderate-level housing.
So, again, the, the original production requirements under 1510 and 1540 were 15% of the total units.
Right.
The proposed amendments would lower that to a 10% requirement, but only focus on the very lows and lows. And we did that primarily because, given the current housing market conditions, we felt that the moderate-income-level units were already being, would be produced by the market, because housing prices have gone down significantly. And the need that we saw was on those very low and low-income households.
Well, go out into our area and start to look at housing. The entry-level house that the city of West Sacramento has seems to be doing very well. It goes on the market, and there seems to be a number of inquiries. People seem to be selling it. I don't know if you need that additional incentive. So, I, I think that what we ought to do is, is have your 5% at low or very low, and then 10% at the market rate or moderate. And, you know, you take it from there, because we're selling houses. I mean, it's not like, like it was five years ago, three years ago, or whatever it is, when we had the big downturn. We're selling homes now, but the industry is starting to come back. It's not back, but it is certainly starting to come back. So, anyway, but I, I didn't quite understand what you said when you said, "Under the housing element, we have a 10% inclusionary figure"? Did you say that?
The, the update to the housing element incorporated some of these proposed amendments that we presented back in the latter part of last year. The reduction from 15% to 10% and targeting to very low and low was one of those proposals that was presented to the council, and it was incorporated into the housing element, yes.
Okay, so what happened to the moderate?
Again, as part of the recommended action or the recommended changes, we removed the moderate requirement from the inclusionary housing requirements.
Well, that's not anything that I favor, so. And this is a workshop, so we'll deal with it.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. First of all, I, I, I'm supportive of the, the approach of trying to simplify or, the reasons for, the impetus for this change were well-founded, because we're spending a lot of staff time on, upfront, on implementing this policy, rather than getting on the business of actually building and funding housing. So, so, so I'm in agreement in the fact that, in principle, what you're trying to do is incent, create the urban district and, and create an incentive to increasing density. It's hugely important, especially with, in the, in the areas you have, just, just what we're counting on to support, what the streetcar needs to support, and it's a delicate balance. We need to find that critical mass where the, the density can support the, the streetcar and, and any other services that we'll have there. So, it's just critical we can do whatever we can to support density. So, I'm in agreement, in principle, with everything you've outlined. Some concerns or questions I have, and it does relate to what Mr. Kristoff brought up, which is the moderate income. Because the way it was structured below, before, was it was 10% for moderate, 5% for low, correct? And, and, and now we're going to this 10% low or very low, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, in, but what I didn't understand, and I get, what you made clear in the staff report was that there's still very much a need, and I would agree with, with it, for good-quality, affordable housing for the, for that segment. What I'm not clear on is what, what's the unintended consequence of, of putting out the moderate? Out of, if you take it out of that inclusionary housing policy, then there's no requirement to build, for a builder, to developer, a home builder to come in and build price, you know, houses at price points that would fit that category, correct?
Correct. In the past, moderate-income units were actually somewhat difficult to, to market, because the quote-unquote "affordable" price for a moderate-income unit was very close to what a market unit was for, for a similar-sized and comparable unit. And again, that was our, our intent in that...
Well, and, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
The current housing market conditions are, in essence, taking care of that, that income range, households in that income range. And so, there is no, no need, at least at this point, to specifically require developers to build units for those households in those income ranges.
Well, and that's the, that's the question I'm, I'm asking. So, your, your assessment is the current market, market conditions are, are eliminating the need for that inclusionary, what, what are you seeing? I mean, from what I understand, home prices are, while the market, it could be argued, is it back completely? I don't know if it'd ever be back to the pace we saw in the past. But values certainly have gone up in the last, at least by looking at sales, a medium sales price, what I've seen, prices have gone up in the last 12 to 18 months. So, with, with moderate-income families measured at 92, household income of 92,000, is that right?
Correct. The moderate-income households are up 220% of their median, so a 4% household is about 92,000 annually.
And so, what would, what would the price, I mean, and that's, I'm trying to make that correlation, so if you're, again, you're, it's the, what I'm trying not to do, is the unintended consequence that home prices will continue to go up, and that, that segment in four years will, will have a sort of, those middle-class families that won't be able to, be able to buy a home. And the inventory is so low, and that just drives the price up more. You see what I'm saying? That's the part I worry about, that by, by cutting it out, I, I see what you're saying, that we have a very big need down low, but that is, that part hasn't been rationalized for me, hasn't been, that hasn't come together, at least. So, while I'm, I can support it going forward as is, I just, that's the part I need to understand a little better. The other thing that, that I worry about, and is the Housing Commission brought back to you, was the, the aspect of economic integration and making sure that the easy way out is putting affordable housing in places that's cheapest to build and not amongst the rest of the community. And it's, it's a policy issue, and I know that's kind of been bubbling up around the country, and there was, I saw a recent article this week that talks about the economic segregation and where's, where the impacts it's having, it could have in communities. I think it's something that, that I, that I worry about. So, in the context of this, what we're doing here is, whatever we can do to make sure that, that integration takes place, that people aren't just taking the easy way out and building it in greenfields because it's cheaper to build out there, that, that's something that, that would concern me. So, that's all the comments I have for now.
Yeah, so I had a couple. Again, I agree with all my colleagues in terms of the direction this is going, the, you know, the, the flexibility, the adaptation to what, a policy that reflects what we really want to accomplish and not simply copying what redevelopment had required before, while creating, continuing to create the community, the community that we say that we want, which is one that has all ranges of affordability and that folks can live their whole lives in, and that kids returning from college or the military, or folks, you know, empty-nester's, or when you lose your job, you don't have to leave the city. I mean, it's just that, that we want to have a broad, diverse range of quality housing of all sizes and types and, and affordability levels. It's important to the health, economic and social health of our community and families in our city. So, this, I think this helps to advance that by just, but, because the goal here is how do we create, how do we create high-quality, affordable housing solutions? And I share the concern about concentration. I, I, I hope we solve those largely by shifting the way that we handle affordable housing. I just don't know how we do that. I mean, that we, I mean, as long as we're building, continue to build affordable housing in big, chunky projects, wherever they are, we're going to have some of these, some of these challenges. But it, but it's true, we don't, I mean, it's not like we want to spread affordable housing evenly everywhere in the city, because then you don't, a lot of folks who are, who need access to transit or to bike lanes or to, you know, close unemployment, don't have them, or the services that they need, while at the same time, we don't want to cluster all affordable housing in areas that do have those services. And so, it's, it's the constant challenge that we've always, that we've always dealt with. The advantage of this kind of a policy is that that leaves that to us, largely, because there's not, it's not like people can build a lot of affordable housing at, for low and very low in particular, without our help. So, the decision about where and how, under this kind of a policy, moves much more to us and to the community than it has in the past, where it's been sort of just accidentally attached, is incorporated into a project that it usually was inappropriate to be a part of, or that we didn't get much, we didn't get nearly the number of units out of it, because we said, "Oh, you want to build a, you know, luxury condominiums, you know, right on the water, and they're going to cost $5 million"? Okay, well, you know, 15% of those $5 million luxury condominiums have to be, you know, affordable for, for folks making $20,000 a year. So, so that, this doesn't work. I mean, so that project didn't get built. And then we got a little bit more creative and said, "Well, you can spend the money on that, but, you know, trying to, trying to make that $5 million condo complex, you know, economically diverse in, in all by itself, meant you could produce one unit, maybe, if you were lucky, and that took a lot of subsidies." And so, getting ourselves the flexibility that this kind of a policy provides, I think, is an important, important step. I, I share Mr. White's concern about the state of the housing industry. At the same time, it has to, it has to pencil. And I want to be careful about the staff report, the staff recommendations presumption that we'll be able to continue to rely on things like CDBG. I mean, as, I mean, as, every year, the, both the President and Congress propose cutting CDBG by 10, 20, 30, 40%. And so, it's not a strategy. It's, we can't build, in, in a system that's saying we're going to bank money for the future to build affordable housing ourselves, that, that bank cannot be already, you know, cashing checks from the 2017 CDBG awards, that we have no idea that that program will even exist, much less existed at this level. So, the, the level of the fee has to reflect what it will take to actually deliver what it says that we're going to accomplish. And that will be cheaper if we're not building $5 million condos, it will be cheaper if we're building it on our schedule, but the fee has to be reflective of that. And although, I mean, I read the, the fee study, we're not, on, on the, particularly on the urban infill zone that we're talking, that is, is the, kind of the most at stake here in many ways, we don't, we, we do not compete with Folsom, Roseville, and Elk Grove on urban infill. And so, when we're talking about the Bridge District and Washington Square and the Bluffs, those projects and the ones that would be eligible for the urban infill area incentive, we, our competition there is entirely in Sacramento, maybe a little bit in Rancho, and maybe a little bit in Sacramento County, but it is not those, it is not those communities. And so, to benchmark a fee based on those places primarily is not the right approach. I mean, it's one of the reasons why, it wasn't clear in the staff report what the Sacramento number is, because they haven't adopted one. But I, I thought that the number that came out of the study that's in here, is, you know, the maximum supportable fee per unit in, for Sacramento, for urban infill is like $30,000, as opposed to, you know, the, the number that we've got in ours of $6,000. I'm certainly not suggesting that we go to 30,000, not by, not by any means, but I don't want to, I don't want to be obsessed either with a Folsom figure of, you know, $5,000 either. That's not, that's not the right marker for somebody that's building, you know, a project that would qualify for the incentive in, in our city. And so, we need, we, let's, let's be real about what the actual market is that we're talking about when we're, when we're bounding what the fee should look like. So, the fee, I'm not arguing for a higher fee, I'm just arguing, we need the right fee to be able to deliver, and, and that's been a challenge in the past, it's been a challenge in other jurisdictions, and we, we need to, we need to make sure that, for us, we get it right. On the, on the urban infill incentive piece of it, so I, I like the concept, the, the actual discounting, it seems quite strong, at the higher levels, which I could, I think I could probably live with, with one, with one consideration, and that I hope you'll, that I hope you'll take a look at between now and the time this, this comes back to us, and that is, that there's two, to me, there's two dimensions of it. There's the actual density on, on the ground that's being built, but, and, and so, in the staff, in the staff report, the, the incentive is based on that density. But it's, but it's, it's also the density relative to the planned density, the, the density that's in our general plan and zoning, in our specific plans, in our financing strategies. All right, so, so when we, we put together a bridge district financing plan, and it's a, and it has to make assumptions, that this, this, this land has been zoned to go to, you know, 60 units per acre, and we're going to assume that it goes to 55 units per acre, and that's how we know we're collecting enough money to build the road system, the bridges, the streetcar, the sewers, and everything else. When folks come in and say, "Oh, guess, you know, look, we're going to build at 30 units per acre," in addition to not meeting the housing need, it also really messes up the whole, the whole neighborhood and its infrastructure and its ability to support restaurants and theaters and, you know, shopping and everything else that we want to see occur. And so, what I wouldn't want to see happen is if, if there's a, if, if, you know, there's a, a project that is, is zoned and is, is designated essentially in a specific plan to be able to accommodate 80 units per acre, and they come in at 32 units per the acre, that we're still giving them a 30% incentive as though they've done something great, because they haven't. And so, I think, you know, taking both of those into account, the absolute density, but also the density relative to what our, what our mutual expectations, because we don't ever assign people densities, you know, in the abstract, what our mutual agreement has been about what that density is, ought to be a consideration in what the, what the incentive is, especially if you're talking about, in, in some cases, incentives and discounts of 80%. I mean, that's, that's, that's not just a little nudge, that's a, that's pretty, that's pretty significant. I realize that's highly, that's, they can be very rare, because we don't have very, we have very few projects that we expect or want to be at 80 units per acre, but I think that's, that's one, one, one tweak I would do on the incentive piece. The, the alternatives... The alternatives that were referenced, you referenced the Housing Commission, raised this, and I want to raise it too, because I actually, I don't agree with the change, the taking the city council and the commissions out of the review process for alternatives. We will see, we will, we'll actually see fewer proposed alternatives under this framework, because they'll have the more attractive alternative, just paying the fee. And so I don't see the need, and for all the reasons that we said when we, when we created this provision that said a developer that wanted an alternative to the inclusionary housing requirement would need to come to the, would need to come to the council. I mean, not for like a two-hour presentation, but in the same way that all these, you know, the other two dozen agenda items that we have, I still think that that's appropriate. And we haven't seen enough of these happen to be able to say, "Oh, yeah, okay, now that we've gone through 10 of them, and they're, we kind of get it, we know what it looks like, we know what the bounds are, we know what the pluses and minuses, what the dangers are, now we're comfortable delegating that to staff." That hasn't happened yet. So to me, that, those provisions in the alternative section, because the alternatives that are listed there are all great, but the language is that those are, that might include those three. They're, it's entirely, it's completely open-ended as to the nature of an alternative that could be approved, and that, that really ought not to be a decision that ends at the staff level, so I think I would join in with Mr. Ledesma on that, on that point. And the conversion of the existing affordable-housing agreements, this is a question, which I certainly support in concept, do, does that have any implications for our Prop 1(c) obligations? If someone had made a commitment to produce housing, affordable housing, as part of our prop 1(c), our, our and their commitments in Proposition 1(c), would they also be able to switch over to a fee-based approach instead?
None of the, we have two developers who have approached us for this recommendation, and neither of those would affect the Prop 1(c) funding. I am not aware of anyone or a developer that has Prop 1(c) obligations, that has come forward with that request.
But would they be able to?
In theory, yes, but, you know, that's something that you can certainly specifically state, that anything that, you know, puts funding in danger would not be approved or wouldn't be eligible.
Well, if there was a recorded covenant, like the HCD covenants that were recorded for Prop 1(c), that's a separate obligation to HCD to build affordable housing. But I think Row's point is correct. The Smart Growth Project met its Prop 1(c) share by dedicating land to bridge housing. Delta Lane is city-owned. The Fulcrum Project, the Unger Project did not include any affordable units.
Okay.
I think we're, I think we're good.
All right, thanks. And any, this is a workshop presentation only? Do you have further comments, or do you have sufficient, sufficient direction? No? You want more direction?
No.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Item, council calendars next, Ms. Richardson?
I guess. The Chamber of Commerce is going to have their luncheon, and they're going to focus on the Fix 50 project again, so just wanted to point that out. And as you mentioned earlier, the final filing date for the council applications is tomorrow at 5:00 PM, and I, as of, we have seven applications, I believe, at this time. And then, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you wanted to speak about the Get Your Business Online program that's taking place on the 28th at the Community Center.
Oh, yeah, we are in partnership with Google hosting, Google nationally has put a program together in partnership with mayors across the country, but locally we're partnering with the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce, the Small Business Administration Office here, SCORE, the Small Business Development Center, I'm sure I'm missing some, but others to put together a workshop as part of a spring-long program to provide training and resources and support for local companies and businesses to get online that aren't, and a surprising number of businesses in the US, including here, are not, don't have a web presence of any kind, but for those that do, to substantially strengthen that, both that presence, the analytics, and the utility of those services for, for building their business in our community. So that's happening on the 20-
28th.
28th of March at the Community Center.
92.
And we'll get the information, all the other information onto the council. I think it's also, it was also in the council newsletter as well. All right, any questions on the calendar? City manager reports?
Mayor, council, at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about the city's water use. The positive trend continues for this period of March 1 through the 15th. Our water use in the city was 25% less than the same period a year ago, so we'll continue to pursue that. Tomorrow, we have a, the regional managers, city managers, county administrators have a joint meeting with the SACOC Board at 11:00 on water and water conservation, with the goal of trying to come up with sort of a common language, so that as we deal with regional media, we're using the same language here in West Sacramento, as someone in Folsom would use.
All right, questions for the city manager? City attorney report? Staff direction from members of the council? We have no future agenda, oh, Mr. Kristof, sorry.
And you brought it up last week, or two weeks ago, whenever we had our meeting, and that was with the SAC, with the regional financing, as far as the ballpark goes, and the WX closing. There may be substantial issues as far as parking revenues are concerned. And I know that it's been discussed with the Rivercats, but at the same time, is there a plan so that there is not a missed, what do you want to call it, a missed payment on a bond, on a bond payment? So, I mean, I think that it's a question I'd just like to have-
Yeah, we can come back and follow up.
Yeah, just somebody talk to River City Financing, I mean, Rivercats, and see if there's adequate funds in a reserve account, or, you know, whatever else. I mean, they have other things, but usually they have a tendency to draw those down.
And the Rivercats have been working with Caltrans to try to minimize the impact, particularly on the second project, on the Pioneer Bridge improvements.
Yeah, okay. It was just a question I wanted to have sort of answered before we have our meeting, which is in April sometime, 28th or something.
All right, we have no future agenda requests? Is there a motion to adjourn? The move by Mr. Ledesma, and seconded by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, turning none. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.